It'll, it has, it's an alligator.
That's from last night.
Oh.
It was weighing me down.
Welcome to the December eleventh meeting of the Litchfield School Board. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions to the agenda? Summary of non-public actions from December fourth, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Miller made a motion to accept the nomination of Natalia.
I didn't make a motion for uh-oh.
For nomination of Natala Umperez as part-time Spanish teacher at CHS at a salary of fourteen thousand twenty-eight dollars for two thousand thirteen fourteen year. Mr. York executed, and the motion carried five zero zero. We have a presentation for the CHS concert choir.
Yes, if I could. I had the absolute pleasure of attending a concert at Bedford Presbyterian Church. And Mr. Lowe had managed to wangle somehow an invitation for our concert choir to attend. And that would have been notable in its own right, but the guest conductor was Renee Clausen, who is a multi-time Grammy winner. I managed to get there early and saw him work with the group. They were having a blast. They had spent how much time with him on the Saturday?
I don't know, I think a couple hours.
And then before the concert, and the concert itself, while it didn't go flawlessly on the organizational part with respect to the church, if you remember that, the singing was fabulous. Great regular church choir. Our students did, I thought, extremely well, reflected well on the community, on the school, on the program, on themselves. Very classy event. And in recognition of the fact that they got to work with one of the most renowned writers and choral directors and arrangers in this field, we thought it would be suitable to give you a certificate of recognition of that. So Matt and Adam are here tonight representing the group, and we'll have signed versions of the certificate for all of the others very shortly. So gentlemen, if you would come forward. Mr. Barker, the board chair would.
Matt?
Congratulations, thank you.
May I?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It may also be worth noting that some of the group, including some former students, got to sing last weekend.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Can you just step up to the Matt, Mike, and I don't know, Mike, Matt? And give us a brief talk about who you got to sing with?
We got to sing with Kenny Rogers at a holiday event, yeah, for, we were his backup choir for a bunch of Christmas songs that he, he didn't write, but he was performing them in front of fourteen hundred people, the Capitol Center for the Arts.
Fantastic.
Very nice. Congratulations, folks, and thank you, and thanks to our fabulous and wonderful music department who works really hard to create these opportunities. And we also recognize that you wouldn't get these opportunities if you didn't work as hard, if you weren't this good, but you have a reputation that precedes you. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Correspondents? Anyone received correspondence? I don't recall seeing any this week, actually. Approval of draft minutes from twelve four thirteen?
From eight?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Stay in. Motion carries five zero zero. Join the forum.
Made a lot of noise, I'm sorry. Jason Garrett, Lemon Paracort. I see tonight you guys are going to be discussing the default budget. Just want to read forty, forty colon fourteen RSA, forty fourteen. It says the default budget as used in this subdivision means the amount of the same appropriations, not level of service, same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the prior year. One, reduced and increased, not or, and, as the case may be, by four different things: debt service, contracts, or other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law. And lastly, reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget. The local governance, the LGC, I know it's referred to as something different now, but put out a PowerPoint a year ago, speaking specifically to how the default budget is calculated. And unfortunately, it describes it as a budget freeze in their PowerPoint. They call it a budget freeze. Now, again, we can agree to disagree, but those are the attorneys that are, that work on these things all the time. And again, attorneys are like, like everyone else, they all, you know, we all have opinions. But my issue is, you know, as I look at the default budget, I've highlighted one, two, three, four, five, six, six or seven different things in here that are not, that don't fit that definition, in my opinion. And in the definition expressed, again, as I read, the LGC's position on it. So again, it's, 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 it's in how we, unfortunately, there's no case law in New Hampshire. Everybody kind of goes where they go because no one has challenged it yet. And until someone challenges it, everybody's going to kind of just go with what they feel because nobody, nobody looks at it differently. We had some pretty good discussion with that here in our town a couple years ago, and this board, well, a different version of this board agreed to avoid that in the future. It might be a good idea to let another set of eyes, not to say that they have any statutory obligation to, but they were willing to, a couple years ago anyway, the budget committee was willing to take a look at it and see what they thought of it, and that there'd be some cooperation between the two boards to ensure that we got it right ahead of time before there was an issue, because we ran up against the clock a couple years ago and had to make changes at the last minute. And never in New Hampshire has there ever been anything as close to not having a default budget as Litchfield came a couple years ago, according to DRA. So I ask that, that you take that very seriously. I do, I'm sure, I'm sure you do, but please, please keep in mind what the RSA says. Because I do, I plan on challenging it if I don't believe it to be correct. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Put this in the middle. So we like to talk about AP Calculus BC course here at Campbell and its current status.
Could you just state your names?
I'm Marcus Rothaker.
And I'm Ben Billings. So right now, as of now, I've heard mixing things from various sources that what we've thought was getting, about to be deliberated on in this school board to pass as a course, AP Calculus BC, that would count towards our grade, towards our transcripts, and towards our GPA. And I've heard that it was kind of on this, what do you call it, the agenda for tonight unofficially. And I think me and Marcus just wanted to talk more about, like, our experience about it.
Yeah, just basically what it is to us, how it's more than, we're going above and beyond. Like, Campbell offers classes at this certain point, and then some students that want to go above and beyond, we just believe that with a GPA association with the course, that without one, it's punishing students, it's definitely worrying them from going above and beyond. And we just don't want this to happen to us or anyone else who tries to follow the same kind of rigorous course, because it's a lot of work.
Also, I just like to say how the process is going into making what started as an ELO into a real course. As of now, we have a funded teacher with a stipend to teach us as a course. We also have a curriculum approved by College Board as an AP-based curriculum. We also have our competencies laid out.
We have.
Our course of study laid out.
We have a syllabus.
Yes.
Everything's been approved so far, and now that the stipend was approved, we can actually go on to fitting into all the different categorizations that the course would need to be considered a class and be able to receive GPA accreditation for, such as the amount of assessments per competency and then the midterm at the end of the semester.
And I know, as in this packet, it says that the principal shall make a decision and award in credit based on the merits of the request, of the recommendation of the department with the successful completion of the course. We are intending to take the AP exam at the end of the year, but we are looking to get GPA credit and course credit by the end of the semester. We've already finished the whole year's curriculum within the semester and are only studying for the exam as of now. And this statement is actually rather broad, whether GPA credit or just course credit that count towards your graduation credits.
Okay, is that the current status on our transcript that colleges will be able to see, which to the colleges we've already applied to, and others that we have not yet? They can see that we took the course, they can see what grade we received in the course, but it will not reflect upon our GPA. And to some colleges, especially I know that there are certain colleges that actually take GPA into account, and we just wanted to show as something that helps us, not, because by taking one less course this semester, we don't want it to end up hurting our GPA instead of helping it.
I think we're just talking about GPA as well, because me and Marcus are first and third, I think, right now respectively, and Leah is second. And I feel like since we're to, we have technically fewer classes that count, it'd be more like leveling the playing field if we had this. And if we lost, if any of us changed positions, I feel like it would be more fair and that it happened fairly, that we all had the same amount of classes that we reported to take, and that I could live with losing my position in a fair way rather than being at the odds of the numbers.
Basically, in the essence of what we want is, we just want it to be fair. We want, if, since we're doing all this extra work, going to, we're going to proceed through this course and obviously expanding our knowledge of calculus and of mathematics. We just want it to not hurt us since we're doing well in the course, which we know that this could be a problem due to a past incident last year.
If you have something else to say, I can wait, it's fine.
No. I was just going to say that this is a recurring problem in the school as well. It happened last year where they had to calculate GPAs up to like a thousandth of a point in order, and that difference that this class could have made could have put a student at the top of their class rather than in third or fourth spot. It's also going to happen in years to come with, there's a current student as a sophomore in AP Calculus. And if he, his schedule doesn't align like the way me and Marcus has, and we weren't able to go to a college course, get credit, and he might have to end up take a class like we are, it's going to come up again, and we'd rather address it for the future and ourselves than let it sit.
Yeah, we're sure that, like Ben was saying, that this is going to happen again, whether it's next year or just sometime in the future. This is setting precedent for if a student wants to go in bug mode, because right now it just classifies independent study, but it's so much more than that. We are going through a full college rigorous course that was approved not only by College Board, which certifies that it's AP and administers AP test, but that it's been approved by the school and in its entirety.
Okay, if I say something? I think, I think definitely kudos to you guys, because you are going above and beyond, and I think that that should be definitely acknowledged. What I think is most important is that, like they said, that it remains fair, but also that it remains fair to all other students, in that this is definitely kind of a last-minute thing for our senior class. Class rank is, this is our last semester before class, final class rank is calculated, so it's kind of a very last-minute thing, and at the same time, I think that they should be rewarded for it in some way. And I had a good conversation with Ryan today, and I think that I'm going to let him share his idea, because this definitely is a situation that's personal to me. So, so I feel like I, as not here as Leah, I'm here as school board representative.
Yeah, so like, like Ben and Marcus were saying, how Leah is right now second in our class, therefore I think her opinions may be slightly biased. So what I would like to talk about is that, as of right now, if they are not receiving credit due to their GPA, I believe that is criticizing their work, and it is, in a way, hurting their chances in either keeping their position of their rank or possibly helping. The only problem I have with this is that it is so late in the year to be discussing this, which offers the, or which gives us the problem that maybe this situation wasn't available for all students, which I believe is what Leah was trying to talk about, is that maybe other students would like to go above and beyond, though they didn't know the procedure, or how to put theirself out there in terms of what.
Different class.
Yeah, exactly. So what we have to talk about is that there are other courses other than AP Calc that there are AP cla, or that there are AP tests for at the end of the year, and that you could make an independent study into teaching yourself these, this course, to take an AP test after, that maybe other students would like to be informed about, which is why possibly an AP credit may not be the best idea for these students, because it's so late in the year and that other students may have liked to have this opportunity as well. Though what I suggest, and I had a long conversation with Ms. Rothaus today, and we came to this agreement as well, is that possibly giving them maybe an honors credit, if not an AP credit, because giving them no credit, like I said, I believe is criticizing their, their work ethic, and they have put definitely enough work this year so far to earn some sort of credit. They are, they are planning on taking the AP test at the end of the year, though since it's so late in the year, I believe that the credit that the last possible resort to this is that maybe they must just get maybe an honors credit, or if not, an AP credit. I don't believe in anything less than that, due to the amount of work that they have and the, yeah, the work that they do all year and the work that they are going to have to do to teach themselves for, and with the help of our HQT, to take this AP test at the end of the year.
And, but Ryan and I did bring up in this conversation was that it would ultimately really level the playing field, because I think that the whole big weighted issue, it's a big issue right now, because coming from a personal perspective, which I'm trying to stay away from right now, but we're all very, very close, where one weighted huge AP, like hugely weighted class could make a big difference in who ends up where. And we've, like, all three of us have been at the top of our classes for the past four years. I think it's safe to say that we've earned our positions. At the same time, I think it's important that we all have a fair chance in this last semester to see what we can do. And so that, that having been said, if that class was given the honors credit, we would honestly, this is a very specific situation, but our classes would match up in like how many AP classes we have, how many honors classes, how many regulars. So it would ultimately be a completely level playing field where it's just who gets the highest grades in that class, or in those classes.
I think it's important to note that coming into this, at the beginning of the year when we enrolled in this, we were, it was just, we wanted to help ourselves, we wanted to better ourselves, so we took calculus too. We had no intention of, oh, we could turn this into some kind of idea that gets ahead GPA-wise, like, we could turn this into something. It is after we realized that Mrs. Angelini was in HQT, and we, she had the ability to help us and teach us and make this a class, and once, basically what we did is, we've already gone over all the material, it was actually approved by College Board, and therefore it is of college AP level, so it is the AP material, it is that extremely advanced material that we have covered, and through all this hard work that we have gone through, we didn't, and like, when we first came in, it was never about the GPA, it was about us. We wanted to be, we wanted to learn more, we wanted to better ourselves, and it turned into this, because now we believe that it could definitely help us, and we believe we deserve it, just to make it even, since we did by not taking another class, which could have helped our GPA, we, now we took this class, which could have no effect at all.
And I'm, I'm just going to say, I agree with Marcus. We went into this with the idea that we're helping ourselves, but shortly after going into it, we did realize that, yes, we should be getting credit for this. This is an AP course, AP credit, and we started rolling it out before the end of first quarter. We started talking to guys, we started talking to Ms. Rothaus. It's just been a long process, as you all can see, and we're nearing the end of the first semester. But it's not that we just decided yesterday, come to the school board and fight this issue. It's been long, Miss, I've done a lot of research with Ms. Callanan regarding other schools and their policies, and we found some that could bridge the gap that we are looking for. And I'd also like to address that, if it's AP certified by the College Board, why should it deserve less than AP credit as an honors course?
Since the classes, the GPA accreditation is determined by the level of material in the class, honors level, AP level, regular level, and APs, we are above and beyond the college-level AP that was certified.
Yeah, absolutely.
The superintendent's comment was going to be about this situation and what a political minefield it can be. The policy here isn't quite as straightforward as it is in other places, and I attached three different policies. You'll note that it's, there are some potentially conflicting pieces there, depending on how you interpret certain things. I do want to congratulate all of you for the work that you're doing, because that is the benefit. Now, who's taken physics here?
I took it.
Who got the higher grade?
I think I ended with an A plus.
I had an A plus.
Yeah, we were close. We both did very well in the SAT exam.
Are you familiar with the terms significant figures and measurement?
Oh, yes.
All right. So if we have two measurements, or more than two measurements, and we derive some new calculation from those new measurements?
Yeah.
What's the general principle of significant figures?
You keep the highest, I mean lowest number of significant figures.
Right. That is, a derivative of a series of measurements should never be represented as more exact as the original measurements themselves, and we measure that in how many significant figures. So letter grades have an error span of three to four grades. Number grades are down to a single grade. How close are you with the top five people in this, in your graduating class? The hundreds of the place, a point in some places?
Yes.
We're point zero two.
The original measurement, in theory, accurate to a single percentage point. And we're going to have to make derivative values based on a measure that's a certain level of accuracy and pretend, pretend that separating people by tenths and hundreds of a point is valid, based on a measurement that's at best, if it was perfect, valid to one percentage point, which is a gross distortion of the principles of measurement. So it is, it is an impossible task. I was involved once with a calculation that went to seven places, past the decimal. Seven places before they got a separation between two students. And my suggestion was, give it to them both. Sometimes you can do that, sometimes you can't. Congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have any more?
Did that replace your comments?
That replaces my comments, replaces your comments?
So the three policies that you noted, I think, are superseded by the handbook, which says, which is by definition a policy once the board adopts it, which says rather clearly, only courses taken through CHS are eligible to be calculated into the grade point average. And then it goes on to the honors option and the GPA option, which I don't think we do, but in my eyes, this is a decision for the administration of the high school, to follow the handbook. Our policy, right or wrong, is silent on GPA. It gives the principal some significant responsibility, I'll say in this case, to, to establish when credit is and isn't given. And I logically extend that to say, part of the credit process is GPA, and the handbook clearly says, if you take any course through CHS, which I think it was phrased that way to exclude V-LAX, so someone didn't go and take a whole bunch of V-LAX courses and try to drive their GPA up. And as much as everybody wants a decision, I, my opinion is, this is something that we let the, the principal and the guidance department sort out at the high school and.
This was the one statement, IHCD, second paragraph, "Advanced placement or dual enrollment courses may be offered for credit at Campbell High School as approved in the annual program of studies." That might be the only, but other than that, I agree with you. It does defer to principal's decision.
I think it also says, though, if you reference the extended learning, it doesn't limit it to non-AP courses, so there's some conflicts we probably have, because there's three different policies that kind of deal with it.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
They kind of deal with it, which I remember, I remember when we redid the GPA to say, honors and AP should have a difference, which was five years ago now, because.
This is the first class.
Your class is the first class to go through four years. There was much gnashing of teeth and wringing of hands that we were going to introduce this, you know, for a class that had already progressed, where someone had already taken an AP, and how do you back, change the GPA? And the suggestion, which made a lot of sense, was to take the incoming freshman class and move forward with it. And that was actually, that was the solution that came from the high school, and rather than, in my opinion, insert the board into a decision that's going to irritate somebody, and I don't know what the right decision is, I'd like to defer it back to the high school and say, you guys know this, work with guidance, come up with something, significant figures notwithstanding.
Yeah, that might include it somewhere.
I don't know, it might.
I, I, that's kind of where I was going, in the sense that if the board has had no hand in it, it's, I mean, by approval of the program of studies and approval of the handbook, then past practice is, is past practice. It's not good to go in and change prac. I think the most unfortunate thing is when you make changes in the way things have been done late in the game. And now, how you want it to be fair and how you want to, you know, but, so I don't, I don't disagree at all. I just want to, like, know that it is, this and athletics are the two things that create the most angst.
After the meeting last week, I actually went and did quite a bit of reading, because there's quite a bit of policy and interpretation, and I don't, really don't have much else to do with my time, apparently. So while it will probably dissatisfy three people in the room, that would be my opinion, but it's up to the board to decide how they want to handle it, if they want to handle it. This could be the, like, the Supreme Court where we just decline to hear the case. Remanded back to the lower court for.
Well, the only thing is, if, if we do go in that direction, I think that we need to make it a point to reassess the situation for the future, the policy.
Yes, that's what I said. The three policies that Dr. Cocker brought forward, I looked at, I actually read through the entire instruction, because you find obscure references, and I couldn't find anything else that linked in, but they need to be clarified.
I hate to say it, but to use a British phrase, but it's, if you're in for a penny in this, you're in for the whole thing. And, and it's too late in the day to be in for the whole thing.
Yeah.
From my perspective.
Well, it's school board comments, hope there was any comments on this or anything else.
Staying out of this mine. Unless you bring me into it, I'm staying out of it.
I congratulate, you know, everybody, as, as Ms. Callanan said last meeting, you know, there's a vast majority of the students that have greater than a three O, indicating the academic prowess of the, of the senior class, and it'll be interesting to see if successive classes can, can maintain that high standard, so.
The way that some schools, larger schools have dealt with this is not to name a single valid criterion, but to name a top one percent. That doesn't help us much.
No.
Not with a graduate in class of 103 students.
In order to get, in order to get past a significant measurement error, we need to have the top 1% be 40 students or whatever the number would come out, yes.
Again, congratulations to both of you guys. I'm glad to hear that you didn't do, go into the class with the expectation that, and I don't know what's gonna happen, we're gonna leave it back to the high school, but I'm glad you didn't go into it with, you know, GPA in mind, but really to better yourselves and get the better education. So, hats off to both of you.
And they were all very well spoken and have made it a point to bear on us what we need to do for the future. Unfortunately, the lateness of the hour. It's a little risky to make changes to that degree.
And, and I'm thinking this should be the new dress code for the high school.
Yeah.
These two young gentlemen are very presentable.
I mean, this makes these guys two meetings in a row too.
Oh, yeah.
They're quickly becoming...
Although they're dressed much better this meeting than they were last meeting, I think.
See, they didn't come late the way Ryan had to.
Does no other school board comments? Budget committee?
John owes me.
Well, I also was at the budget committee because I was there Thursday, you were there Tuesday.
Oh, that's true. Do you wanna go first?
Bye, guys.
I can. Alright, we did get a few budgets approved. Get to the, alright, so we got, the school board budget was approved, but it was reduced by $2,000. So I think that was approved, $59,000. They reduced, I count 700, I think it was.
Or travel, is that a lot of travel?
No.
We don't have any travel. We have $200 in travel.
I think that may have been lawyer fees or something. Audit, it was audit, audit budget.
Audit and furniture, I think they had.
Audit, yeah.
That makes sense.
And then on salaries and benefits, that was 102. I see a $99 reduction on that. That was something I think we hadn't used and we just put a, there's $100 in it, he cut it to a dollar. So, in that line. Recommended salaries and benefits of 631, 523. This created much discussion on budget lines.
The school board salaries and benefits you're talking about?
Yeah, and it began a conversation by Mr. Cutter on budget lines.
272 and 580?
Yes, that's it. 272 and 580. Okay, so those numbers, that is mileage and trips, conferences and stuff like that. And it seemed that in the past, that number had been around 50, $60,000, sometimes lower in the, in the 40s. And now this year was like 83 or 84,000. Mr. Cutter was looking to do a reduction across the whole budget on those two lines of $30,000. We got him to hold off on that to let the, Dr. Cutter, Dr. Cochran and Frank to do a little research on this. In the meantime, Mr. Cutter sent out an email. It was more detailed and now has decided that that budget needs to be cut by $50,000.
To $50,000?
No, no, no. By $50,000.
Oh, that was not how I read it, but, okay.
Okay, well, well, that's how I read it, but if I'm wrong, I would be gladly wrong on that.
I think that's where the conversation is.
And his, his email in, in summary was that he doesn't know whether or not these trips for our principals and the staff that go to them, whether they, they have a value or not. And I imagine when we have that conversation, that's really not a, the budget committee is not to determine whether something is of value or not to an administrator. If the administration, the school board believes these conferences are, I don't believe it's the budget committee's position to take a stand that says, we don't see any value in that. It doesn't mean they can't cut the budget, it just means that if the logic is that I go to conferences and when I go to my conference, it's just a great big party and it doesn't bring any value, well, okay, that's where you work and that's your conferences. I don't know if that's a reflection on educational conferences. So I think that, that's a, a wrong parable there. But, but I, but I do believe that's coming back and, and it will need a substantial argument made to the budget committee to accept that. And, and, or it, I believe it's going to get reduced by a minimum of about $30,000 because I, I sensed a consensus when they were discussing it, but they were willing to have the school board and the administration have an opportunity to at least get a few ducks in a row to come back and, and argue that.
So what exactly was sent by email?
It only went to the budget committee. John, John just forwarded it to me because I was coming last night.
I can, I can send it out to the school board.
But they were talking about the validity of the line item via email?
No.
For the total. Okay, just the total. So he gave like the last like six years totals what we spent?
The, the three-year average is about 54,000. Last year it was about 63,000. I think there were seven people who attend national conferences. The national conferences are in the, their contracts, but the greater justification is that the national conferences, you know, are intended to not just keep people up to speed, but improve our knowledge base and our skill base and, and help us lead schools and lead districts in a more effective and, and way. So, I, what I did do to try and look at this was I went back to the current budget. Last year, like I say, the actual was about 62.5, 63,000 and we believe, I believe we saved some money because Steve was ASBO president. And so, we're probably looking, you know, 65 or so would have been the actual costs. The current budget is 83, 934. And when you look at it from that perspective, with last year was this, I think, the second highest. About four or five years ago, we had one that was up in the 60s as well. So, I mean, my, you know, position is essentially that what we used last year is probably a good benchmark to use. I value the conference for myself. If it's not valuable, if it's not worth not just the money, but much more than the money and the time, then we probably shouldn't be going. Based on the National Superintendent's Conference, to me, the, the value was significantly more than the cost. And my hope is that, that that's so for the three principals and for the curriculum director and for the sped director and for our business administrator. A lot of this, what I did do was went into the budget and went into the line detail. So in some cases, the $3,500 item was broken down into four different things and just have broken that all out completely. A lot of this is very mundane stuff. I think the, the criticism was that of, you know, attending conferences is nice and good stuff, but its value is limited. Little of the, the $60-some thousand dollars last year was actually travel to national conferences. I think there were only seven people who went to national conferences. Most of it is PD in the local area. For example, there's $4,500 for technology, for professional training, for technology services. The vast majority of that is WebEx's on servers on, I know. I go in and see Kyle sitting hours at a time at the, at the, his computer screen on a WebEx. It's not witsy sexy stuff where people are saying, gosh, let me, let me go somewhere. This is stuff that we need to run the nuts and bolts of the district or help improve the district. You know, different industries have different, different expectations of professional development. I think the school district and the schools, we should expect them to be learning organizations and you can't do that without professional development. That said, some professional development has more value than others and I think we need to make sure that we're getting the best uses of our money.
So, Frank just sent out an email with the, the information from, from Andrew, so.
That did come up last night. Bill asked what was gonna happen because Andrew was gonna miss meetings until the 18th.
He is?
Yes, that's, that's what was discussed last night.
There'll be a discussion on the, it's gonna be a vote.
Well, Bill said, you know, either he needs to let the chair know what he wants to do to try, so somebody can bring it forward for him, or that might have to wait till the 18th. The, I guess they would just treat it as a bottom line. That was my understa, my belief from what they discussed last night is they wouldn't reopen each budget. They would say, if you sum all the things, it's $83,000 and we cut it to what, we're gonna motion a cut to whatever.
That Dr. Cochran and I talked about that since that meeting. And I don't think that at the time, we're, I don't think we're against that. If the school board says you are, then I just need to be able to convey that tomorrow.
I'd be surprised if it comes up again tomorrow, but it...
But I can, I can tell them that, that, you know, if it does, we can say, okay, well, we're gonna be willing to hold the argument until the 18th and just move on and, and just try to make an argument on that 18. And then if it is cut, then, then at that point in time, the, the district would have to go in and administer on those two, on those two budget lines, the necessary reductions and how they would fall and what the impact would be. But I mean, I don't know if this is, part of this is, is LEA contracted training or stuff like that.
Some of it is very small amounts or spend on the LEA. This is, this is almost...
I mean, I think, I, we should definitely come in, I think, with the argument that here's the national conferences that are required by contract. Whatever that number is, if it's 25,000 or if it's 50,000, the travel, the associated fees, all that, that's for the people that have that in their contract because several years ago, all the administrators gave up their national conference for one year and we were gonna lose the $2 million. I think it's our duty to support their effort to stay current in their profession. I don't, I don't think it's a boondoggle where they go off and they party for a weekend and they come back.
Normally it's, normally it's also Monday through Friday, it's all for, they don't tend to hold this conference.
Right, they don't tend to hold them on the weekends. The, I mean, you could argue about some of the travel. I know we've had discussions about in district, you know, reimbursing people for traveling in district. You can make the argument either way. I've seen it done both ways. But we should at least be able to defend the, minimum the conferences that are contracted and then those conferences that have a specific tie to something we're doing. Like if Kyle's trying to go to virtualization conferences, that's a money saver out of the gate. Otherwise, we're gonna pay for a consultant or more for a consultant to come in and help us do whatever we need to do. So, I don't think it would be that hard to pull that kind of information together, at least at a relatively gross level.
And I think there's a, you can make a legitimate argument for a significant cut. And what we've said in others, what I've said in other, with other budgets was we're gonna try and level fund for next year unless it's a strategic need. And level fund would be at a, at a reduction of around 15 to 17,000. And I, I think there's value in this, but at the same time, I don't see any, any reason to budget $83,000 when we really only anticipate spending 63, 65. So, I wouldn't be opposed to, to that. You know, it is, it is a year that we're hoping to have a, as minimal a tax impact as possible in the event of a successful teachers agreement. But in any year, I would, I mean, I, I don't see a strategic need to increase the money we're spending on PD. I wouldn't put it in that category, but I would put it in the category, it's worth the value of what we're spending. And if we had to start making cuts, could we cut some of this and minimize? Yes, but I also think we have to change our procedures. I think it helps when you, it helps both with the people who are attending and the justification and the transparency. If there's some sort of report that comes back that requires you to report out what you learned, what you got out of it, which sessions you attended, that sort of thing. So that people are aware that they're going there for the learning. And I think that, that, that does happen, but, you know, and that's something that the board wishes we could certainly do and I've been involved with, with those sorts of, of changes in, in the past to really make sure that people focus on the, the fact that you're using taxpayer dollars, you're there to benefit the district and, you know, we need to be able to show the value added.
So we got a few, you know, rest of the other curriculum and budgets and stuff got, got approved. Do the process on that. And I think that...
Were there any other big cuts, like curriculum stuff?
No, that one actually went 7070. I actually got the vote yes. I was very excited.
I got to vote yes twice last night.
It was very exciting. Oh, we did, I did discuss with the budget committee that the school board may or may not come with a bottom line increase for our water costs and for our transportation costs. And that, that we would be discussing that. I didn't see it on the agenda today, so I don't know if we are, but that we would be bringing a number forward either today or next week, which would make it on the 18th, that reflects what we believe would be the honest, best guessed estimate of, of the school board. I informed them of the issue with transportation. Since they gave us the information on the, on the water information that they shared with us, that we would decide that. And I also told them that the, the school board would be receptive to, at our public hearing in February, where if we had negotiated and numbers were, we had a better number, that we would make, you know, the school board would make a recommendation that the bottom, that the budgets and those lines get cut. But we did not feel comfortable going to February and asking for an increase on those lines because we didn't feel that was the correct process for there would be, to, there would be an increase. So, the school board needs to maybe give some direction to the SAU staff of exactly what percentages we want to see the increase be and for them to then do the calculations and get them, if, unless they have them tonight, to the school boards for the school board to approve to be presented to the budget committee. And if that takes us to next Thursday, because it doesn't happen today, it, it really, we can't approve it until we discuss it next Wednesday, then that leaves, again, that Thursday to be, you know, the last day that, and, and the same thing because I, I think that our warrant articles aren't where we're gonna, we don't know where those are. We're gonna discuss them today, but I think it's important that we probably need to know exactly what the timeline for our responsibility is is getting information to the budget committee. Up to and including if that means having to meet in the first week of January on that Thursday or Friday or something or earlier the first week, for first four week of January, if we need to make votes to get stuff in their hands so that they, because I believe that they picked a day for their meeting. It was going to be 16th is when they're gonna, they're gonna have their meeting. So I believe that they're, they're hearing. So I believe their last meeting could be the ninth. They are open to meeting on the second if they, if they have stuff to do. They are open to meeting on the second if they, if they have stuff to do, but they're also not going to be meeting after the 18th until, um, the second or the ninth, depending on how things progress through everything else, so.
December, the nineteenth? The eighteenth? Eighteenth's Wednesday.
Okay, then the nineteenth. They'll be, they will be meeting on the nineteenth. So that's sort of my update. I defer now to Mr. Melo who covered for us yesterday.
So last night, um, Dr. Cochran and Frank and Devin did special education and special education salaries. I would expect a eighty thousand dollar cut minimum to special ed transportation if, whenever they're voting, which I think is next Tuesday. There was a discussion on the salaries line for the position that we added last year for, targeted at autism, if I remember correctly, and they asked for specific savings, um, this year and, yeah, this year and projected for next year. There was some discomfort at the position being in the budget, I would say, from several members, and they wanna see the rationale for why. And Devin said it's an IEP required position. She went through the whole thing and agreed to bring that information back. Uh, then they, we covered, uh, district-wide salaries and district-wide last night. We voted, uh, they voted in, uh, LMS and CHS. LMS, uh, was cut about, well, was cut exactly eighty-eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. There was a little bit of angst about getting to the same number with multiple members. We got there. Um, it was, it was relative, the, uh, the biggest was, uh, well, there was twenty-five hundred dollars cut from Project Safeguard because they want them to fundraise, and then the fifty-four forty-two was, that was the last one, repairs and maintenance.
For LMS?
Yeah.
Athletic and co-curricular, athletic transportation or co-curricular transportation?
Yeah. So LMS actually came out at four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, CHS, there was a net reduction of, uh, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. I think the biggest chunk, again, was from the athletics and athletic transportation. Much discussion about self-funded programs. Bill had an interesting, um, suggestion that was bandied about for probably twenty minutes was to make our budget, um, overall budget number lower to reduce self-funded. Right now, it's in the budget at ninety thousand dollars. Um, he thinks it's expended somewhere between twenty-five and fifty percent of that number, and it would have no impact. Um, I, the only impact that, that I commented on was if you reduce the overall bottom line and suddenly you're correctly accounting for and spending the money for those self-funded programs, you've in essence left yourself fifty thousand dollars short on the bottom line. So you're, you potentially would not do something if you don't have that underspend, which Mr. Brunel and Mr. Peoples were both concerned that, um, potentially students and parents and organizations that had done fundraising could be short-changed in the end because you could say, are we gonna go do this academic activity or are we gonna fund this self-funded activity? And I said to Bill, you would put us in the position of coming back to ask for an overspend for a self-funded program, which he goes, well, yeah, that would be okay. Just a little bit of work you have to do there, but, um, so they, they were gonna go off and think about that, and they wanted to see how the money hit the lines. We need to definitely straighten that out, um, so we can show actuals against that. And I, I think Frank has something tonight, and I've got a, a couple of questions about that. Um, and then, uh, LMS salaries went through with no reduction and CHS salaries went through with no reduction. So I got to vote yes. Well, three times last night, 'cause I adjourned, voted to adjourn. So, uh, I think GMS is being voted tomorrow. They switched the order around.
Technology.
And technology, so. You guys, I don't know who's going, if you wanna be prepared.
Technologies is such a.
And, oh, and I believe tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Tuesday, they're gonna open every single town budget and revote it, 'cause the selectmen changed it.
Yes, they did. Right here it is. Did you get one of these?
No.
You got emailed out to us.
Oh, you got an email, I didn't get.
Yeah. So John Brunel said, most of them went down, so it should be easy.
I think it's, I think it's going to be, um, tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I.
Make sure you're there, buddy.
No, I'm gonna be there.
Why is that changing?
Um, they, they did some things with insurance. I think they got their insurance rates, so they adjusted some stuff. And then i- in one case, John said, we disagreed with what the budget committee did, so we put the money back in. It seems kinda fruitless, but I didn't wanna prolong the conversation, 'cause it was already ten fifteen. I just let it go. And John said, you guys can vote to take it out again, that's okay.
The, uh, the major pieces that were reduced for CHS were thirty-eight hundred for voc ed tuition.
Oh, that's right.
Really brings us down to kinda what we've, where we've been the last few years. We've maintained about twenty-two students. Um, I think there was, there was a little bit of cushion built in, because at one point there was talk about significant, uh, federal reductions, transfer into the state, transfer to us. And I think we're not hearing that, that chatter as much anymore. Frank, I'm not at the superintendent's level, you haven't.
We haven't heard it, national.
So I think it makes sense to, to, to bring that down. Game officials for athletics was just under three thousand, and one that I was a little surprised by was fifteen hundred dollars for the lights for the homecoming football game.
I think that's because they believe they're gonna get donated again. And I gotta believe with what happens with the community that if Continental couldn't donate the lights, that athletics would probably, or the football team would raise fifteen hundred dollars if they had to, I think, to.
And I also think that we concluded that power smoking and powerfing locks is an April event, and it will be an annual April event.
I think we should have a bonfire to coincide with it, I mean.
The, uh, Brian just, um, reminded me, the other thing that they, they talked about, um, and I know it's not, probably do this year. They would like the school board, Bill picked the number two hundred thousand, I asked him to use the number four hundred thousand, because I thought it was more fair than his two hundred thousand, but they would say that if we could come with a technology plan that said, we're going to spend X amount of dollars, and this is the plan for the next three years, you know, whatever that number is, and, you know, a fixed number, that they would feel more comfortable with us making that presentation and realizing that that technology is a fixed budget cost of, you know, two fifty, two hundred, three fifty, whatever it is. Because I think that, that, they, I think they had the same, um, they would like to see the stability in that, in that budget, rather, and, 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 and I think maybe Kyle and the, the schools may, may also want the same thing. So it is a lock number. Now, his comment was five years. I told him I didn't think that was realistically attainable. Two years, maybe, three years, very light, I said, 'cause whatever we're discussing today, eighteen months from now, is gonna be so different. And, and so, um, uh, and as, as Kyle was telling them in, in some aspects, you know, some of the equipment that we're, that we're putting into the schools today, when its end of life occurs, those devices will be gone. They will be, there will be something else. It won't be a laptop, it won't be a PC, it'll be, it will be something different, because that's just the world we're moving in. And, uh, so that was just one of the things that, 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 that they were looking for, the school board. So I don't think it's something that we can do for this budget, but it might be something to, to, um, keep an eye on and ask for, um, Kyle, as a tech, IT director, to begin that process of a two-year budget plan, so that when we get to it next year, we can go to them and say, here's our two-year plan. And I think we may find a, a more receptive idea to that than, um, coming in and, and doing that. And, and it may be that we're, you know, the concentration is, you know, this school or LMS or GMS, and this is how we're going to go about doing this, so.
I absolutely agree. I think we need, actually, a, a three-year plan. There's some really good technology people on the, on the budget committee. Um, Ray Peoples in, in particular, who, uh, made some very insightful comments about, uh, the switch over in technology, and at what point do you finally cut the switch and move over to one-to-one computing, so you can save yourself the money on the build a computer lab side to keep the level funding. And, and I think, you know, that's, that's the important piece. You can't keep, you need, you need to invest in the infrastructure that you're gonna need after you switch over, but you have to stop funding the infrastructure that you're moving away from, so that you're not double-spending for a period of time. Put in a lab, use it for a year, and then say, we're gonna go to one-on-one computing, doesn't make any sense. So we do need that three-year plan. Uh, once we get through negotiations and budget, I'm hoping actually to be able to spend some significant time on it. We do have some people, uh, that we've approached for, for the committee to get some, uh, school input in. Uh, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we will get that to the board by no later than March.
So it's interesting, we had a plan that had costs out five years that never got support.
Well, I think, yeah, I, I'm with you.
Now we've, we've flipped around.
Well, I think, and, and I think that, you know, Ray, what Ray brought up was the fact that the, the, um, school that his son works at, they just went to, it's a private school, but in, in Florida, but they went, all went to individual, you know, notepads, devices, whatever they were. And he's like, well, what are you guys going to go to that? And I said, well, we've, we've had, we had a brief discussion on that, you know, six months ago, where, but it, it, it hasn't percolated to the top of, of, of the process, but it, but I, but I, I would imagine that in everybody's mind, it, it, it's there. I mean, uh, Mr. Pasquale commented that at Trinity, they've, they've done that, and, you know, they, whatever the device was, and, and they just raised the tuition by X amount of dollars to cover that, and, and you had to sign away your house and your cars and everything you owned, in case something happened to the poor device. And, um, and, and, you know, they did recognize that may be a little bit more difficult in a public setting to, to do that, so, um, but it is, again, I think that's one of those conversations for the schools and, and IT and whatever, to begin the process, and where do we begin that, that process? You know, at, at which school and, and, and then, you know, are we gonna be committed to it and begin that process? Because these are the pro, these are the computers and things that are dying, and this is how we're gonna do it, and this is the best way. So, um, March, I think, is a, a great plan, a great idea to have that in place for us, but I think it needs to be a very thorough and vetted, uh, process by the schools that, um.
Are there any schools that, public schools that already do that? That we could see what their model is and the success rate on it? 'Cause obviously the concern is, are these devices gonna be lost, broken, stolen?
Yes.
You know, that's.
Yes, there's a district, or yes, that's gonna happen?
Yes, that's gonna happen.
Okay, I was just making sure.
It will, it will. And then, then what? Then what?
It's, uh.
It's, it's not a, it's not gonna be a good conversation.
I mean, you know, we, we have the discussion every year about calculators and batteries. And if we've gotta buy eight thousand batteries for calculators.
They brought that up.
If we've gotta buy eight thousand batteries for calculators, we're gonna need to buy four hundred batteries for.
Well, I mean, you know, the biggest key is, some of the things that was funny that they were talking about, and, and Dr. Cochran, you know, talked about, and Ray Peoples, you know, they, they can, the kids can take the devices, and they could probably play any app in the world, and, and probably any game on that, but if you ask them to, you know, type a memo, do a PowerPoint or something like that, you know, in, in, in elementary school, middle school, then they may look at you like, what are you talking about? What's a keypad and what's a mouse? You know, in, in that aspect. So I, I, I think it's one of the, I, I think it's important. I think there, um, I think there are some schools that are, that are doing it. I don't, I don't know which ones there are, but I, I thought I heard Wyndham was doing something, uh, along that lines. I just don't know how far along it, it is, but, um, but, but, yeah, and I, and I mean, the devices can be made, I mean, you know, I use my kids. I mean, Kylie's had a Kindle for two years, and it's perfect. I mean, you know, we, but we got a case for it, you know, she dropped it, whatever, the, you know, it's two years old, it still works fine. You know, so, you know, and, and there are plenty of devices out there that are made to go out and, and be more beat up than kids can beat it up, because they're taken to the field for whatever the jobs are, and that can be, devices can be made to, to be whatever. I mean.
Organized.
Well, yes. I mean, we did that with my son's three DS, and his lasted three years, so, 'cause we, we knew that, you know.
Ray brought that up, I think, as far as the schools, when Chris was saying that, you know, you get seven hundred of them, all seven hundred are gonna get broken, and like Ray said, no, you just get an autobox one. It's almost, you know, indestructible, I mean, there are ways to like safeguard them, so, so.
So I think that there are things, and I, and I, and I would encourage, uh, the school board and the administration to begin that process, 'cause it seemed like that was a pretty unanimous position across the members of the board that were, that were there, and, so. It doesn't necessarily mean they'll vote for it, but.
In answer to your question, Wyndham and a few other districts have, have done either one-time rollouts, all kids at the high school level, or, uh, one-grade rollouts. Um, I'm not sure the extent to which it was a planned, what is it that the teachers need? What do the, the students need? How does it relate to the curriculum? You know, does our, our student information system have, have learning management system capability, so we can push stuff out to students? I mean, it's just now that we're talking about functional emails for our high school and middle school students. My understanding is the middle school students are piloting, although they may be more detailed in Kyle's memo, I didn't get a chance to read it, but they've been piloting it with, uh, Robin Corbeal's classes and the grade eight, um, Lit Tech class, use of the emails. It's the same login that the kids have now for the system, and there should be, uh, Kyle was trying to get some feedback from, uh, high school administration about how to pilot it, it at the high school. But we're now just getting to the point where we have a systematic email system for our students. We have the, the capability, pretty decent capability, for kids to walk around and use their laptop, but there's nothing to log into. They're not, you know, teachers are not, uh, have any way other than email to get handouts to them, to get assignments back and forth, and that, you know. So having all those pieces in place is the big piece, and you really have to know what it is that you're trying to change and improve as a result of this process, and, and build that in from the start. So for me, that student information system piece that allows students and parents to go in and view, so the, the ease of communication, uh, on a real-time basis, teacher goes in and puts in an English mark on a paper and hits enter, then the parent sees it that night if they want to. Right now, we process grades every, uh, fourteen days. So if you take something, you know, if you take a test, and then it gets graded, and then the teacher puts it into their grade book, and then that happens, you know, on a Tuesday, and the rollover day was Monday, you have to wait thirteen more days to get it, and the kid actually took the assessment four days ago. So now you're looking at almost a twenty-day gap from feedback to the parents. So you can see the, the issue. But the availability of the curriculum, uh.
Well, you know, it, it, I can interrupt, but at the, uh, at the elementary school, they have.
Do you have a band in your purse?
They have, um, all these different, um, math, spelling programs. And the kids go in, Kylie goes in, it's on her Kindle, she goes in and plays and does math and does things, and I, I'm not sure it's getting back to the teachers, but it, it's, it's, you're listed by teacher, so I would imagine that the, the teacher's getting some impact. Now, these are national programs, and I, I keep their, I can't tell you exactly what the names are, because I'm not playing them, because I hope I'm smarter than a third grader or a fourth grader, and, uh, not a fifth grader. But, uh, but, uh, yeah, so they're there, and, and I would agree. We have to make sure that our curriculum is matched up to the devices. Now, personally, I believe it may be easier to begin the process in the elementary school than in the high school, for a simple reason, they are already testing some programs that are down there that are tied to the math that they're doing, and it's tied to the spelling, it's tied to the reading and stuff, that they're doing right then and there. So while they are the, the youngest ones, uh, in the group, they may already be better equipped at, at getting programs to the kids on a, that are already there and that are free, that don't cost anything for us to, to use that, enhance the learning of our children, so.
That's why it's always good to find someone else who's gone down the path. That's why it's always good to find someone else who's gone down the path before you and can tell you what the pitfalls are.
Well, if you did that and you heard the pitfall, sometimes you won't wanna walk down the road.
Well, sometimes that's better to know ahead of time, isn't it?
Yeah.
It is. That's very true.
All righty, BA update, self-funded programs.
Uh, I provided the board, as was mentioned by Mr. Miller. Uh, last evening, we had a discussion with the budget committee, and I thought I would provide you folks, and I won't go through the detail of the, uh, information that I provided to you. But I can tell you that, um, we did an extensive review today of, of not only the self-funded, um, fifteen oh one function code, but also the co-curricula. And, um, there were a couple of comments made last evening, and I'll just, as a brief overview. Uh, self-funded accounts have to remain in the general ledger because that's our ability to financially control the expenditures, just as any program. Uh, it is a program of the district, the self-funded programs you accept into the district such as wrestling and, uh, now we have lacrosse. They are accepted in our programs, and how they are funded, the funding mechanism is through, um, for instance, the Friends of Wrestling or the Friends of Lacrosse. But they ma, they need to remain in the, in the general ledger. That's our ability to financially control the, the income and expense on those. The fifteen oh one, the self-funded, uh, there haven't, hasn't been a whole lot of activity, quite frankly, in those accounts. And when we looked at them today, we did some audit, uh, trailing of, of some of the expenditures. It's, it, it appears that some of the expenditures that really should be hitting the fifty oh one are, are going against the co-curricula. And, um, there's some cleanup that needs to be done there. But for the most part, um, there was the, uh, sense that, that the town was funding these accounts because they're in the general, uh, fund appropriation. That is not true because, um, well, it's, it's not a true statement. Because what happens is we offset, if there's ninety thousand, for instance, in two thousand fifteen, we're looking at ninety thousand seven seventy-three, you'll see the revenue projection will be exactly that same amount. There is no money returned if that is underspent because, again, it's, it's a function of, uh, if we underspend the appropriation, the revenue will likely, uh, will in-like be also understated as well, or overstating, we'll adjust it, so... And I'll attempt to clarify that. Uh, I did, um, we did post it with the budget committee, uh, for tomorrow evening, or we will. And I did have an opportunity to poll a couple of the budget committee members with the memo. And, again, their feeling is that they agree with everything I said, that there's no, um, tax consequence, there's no unassigned fund balance consequence. However, they feel that we're overstating our requested budget. We're not. It has to stay there because it is a program, how it's funded, uh, you set us, set that aside. The fact that it is, it's, it's a school district program that we have to have the ability to monitor. It's not like a student activity fund where it's just over there.
So, uh, one thing, when I read this today, Frank, is on, under the processing on number two, you actually say student activities, and I don't think you mean to say that. Because the student activities fund is completely separate, or it's supposed to be...
No, I did mean to say that. Because the money that comes in, we have to put that money somewhere when, for instance, the lacrosse, Friends of Lacrosse come and they, they make their first payment, if you will, to the district, where do we put that money? We, we put it with the student activities fund. If they have a separate, uh, fund for it, but you'll see it in the student activity fund, that they are the keeper of that money until it's drawn upon for the expenditures. So, I did mean to, to make that statement.
So, why isn't it going into our, why isn't it going into the school board revenue side?
Because it's self-funded and will, it's only brought into the general fund when it's going to be expensed.
So, if there is, if we do underspend it, we just never transfer the money to our fund?
Correct.
It's still in their account, basically?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a separate, basically?
Because if you did, if you took the, the approach to take all the money into the general fund, then it would be, it would impact the unassigned fund balance if, if you did underspend it. So, because it's self-funded, it gives them the ability, A, to only fund what they're actually spending throughout that year, and B, it allows them to retain that money for the following year. Otherwise, if it came into the general fund, we clean out, if you will, at the end of the year. It hits the unassigned fund balance. You do not want that to happen.
So, in this instance, in your processing, who cuts the check?
On the expenditure side?
Yeah.
Or the coming over?
On the expenditure side.
To, to, to pay...
To pay.
To pay expenses, we do.
We mean, the SAU office?
No. There's two checks cut. This is where it gets confusing. There's one check cut from the student activity administrator, for instance, here at the high school, it's Sherry. Sherry gets a request for a check from whoever it is, it could be, um, the athletics department, says to Sherry, we're buying some equipment for the wrestling team. You need to cut a check for six hundred dollars and send it to the accounting department at SAU. We take that money in, we process it to the revenue account, and we cut the purchase order, and we cut the check to make the purchase of the equipment for the wrestling team. So, we control the expenses.
But the expenses aren't showing up on our line items.
They are when they hit, sure they will.
They, they, they haven't, because we don't show any, any expenditures on our self-funded...
No, 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 even last...
You had some last year that showed up, but they're mostly in the personnel side.
On the way, okay.
Personnel benefits.
So, so, but what I'm saying is, so where is the process breaking down? I mean, how do you write a check?
It's not breaking down.
How do you write a check against the line item that's expensed? Let's, we'll use the, the fifteen oh one, I guess, is, is a, you know, and then say it's, it's Campbell High School, and it's lacrosse, and it's for referees for a game.
Right.
That should show up as an expense, and we should be signing one of those documents over there saying it's an expense.
Correct.
Well, I don't know if we are signing one of those things, and I know for a fact it's not showing up in the, in the, in the, in the budget that way. Because it's not tracked.
I don't know that it ever has. Because if you look back three years, it's...
That's the way it should be. So, some of it's hit...
This is just the other concern I have on that. It, it, and that is, is let's say the expenditure is fifteen thousand dollars. Let's say lacrosse or wrestling, it's fifteen thousand dollars at the beginning of the year, and that's what they give the school to cover the cost of the program. And let's say the cost of the program is thirteen thousand dollars. That's what they, that's what the expenses came to. What's happening with the two thousand dollars?
Stays with the student activity fund. That is my point. It's not your money as a school district.
So, John, what, what athletics told me happens, at the beginning of the year, when lacrosse starts, they pay half of what the expected amount is. So, if it was fifteen thousand dollars, they pay seventy-five hundred dollars into the student, into wherever the money goes. I'm just telling you what was told to me. You can, you can say...
I know, I got the agreement right here. I'll show you the agreement that we have with lacrosse.
Well, so that's what happens with wrestling, apparently.
Okay, wrestling but not lacrosse.
I'm extending it to lacrosse.
Okay, all right.
The season goes on, when they get to the end of the year, they say, you know what? We thought it was fifteen thousand, you gave us seventy-five hundred, it's really fourteen thousand. So, you only owe us sixty-five hundred dollars. Then they send the sixty-five hundred dollars in.
So, who's funding the six thousand dollars, sixty-five hundred dollars?
My, understanding, which is flawed based upon what Frank's presented, is that the original check from wrestling went into the general fund. And then, we were, just weren't debiting against the right line item. Now, it's going into the self-funded, so self-funded, if they're truly writing checks...
So, they're able to cover, which means...
There's a balance.
There's a balance?
Yes. Because that rules...
They're able to write checks against income they don't have. Because at the end of the year...
Just like the town.
On June thirtieth, their checkbook should be zero.
Correct.
If they got money in...
For wrestling.
They should've sent it back.
For wrestling.
Or, or any...
Well, no, because, so this is where it gets kinda muddy. Because the money that they collected at the night football game, and they collected at basketball games, and they collected for the drama, the, the guys and dolls, all gets deposited into that account. That same account.
Which is used...
So, there's a little bit of float, like the town has their fund balance, there's just a sum of money in there. The parking lot money goes into that, into the student activities account that the principal has control over. And so, two people, I, because I went and reread the policy today, two people have to sign that, with one of them being the principal or the assistant principal, I don't know who the second person that signs checks in the offices.
All right.
So, when they wanna do something, they say, I need a check for a thousand dollars to pay for new wrestling mats. According to the process, a thousand dollars comes out of the self-funded and should go in. And then, that's when you recognize the revenue, correct? That check should then be cut from the district out to the mat vendor against self-funded supplies. That's the piece that I believe is not happening correctly.
You said it's going to be co-curriculars?
What it's hitting, it's hitting athletic supplies.
We did an audit today, and again, this, trust me when I tell you, we started this at nine o'clock this morning, and at two o'clock this afternoon, you're going to see the whiteboard in there. We looked at, we did an audit trail of the fifteen oh one, we did it of co-curricula, we did it of supplies. It appears there's some inconsistencies on how the process is applied. This is how, as I've written up for you folks, is how it's supposed to happen. Some supplies did show up in your, in your self-funded last year, but marginal, very, nothing what should have. Because then you look at co-curricula, and you start seeing some seepage, if you will, some, some of the expenses that maybe should've been in self-funded were creeping in, in over to the co-curricula and our athletics. So, it's gonna require us to really start controlling that. The money should not come into the district. Again, it, it's great if it does, but it makes a little bit of an accounting nightmare for us because it's much easier to fund as expended, bringing that money into the district so that at the end of the year, we can look at that Fund thirteen, um, thirteen thirty in the revenue, which is our revenue coming into the district should be X and equal X over here on the expenditure side, they wash. So...
So, the system is running, but it's not firing on all cylinders?
System is running on five cylinders, should be eight. So, again, to, to address the, the budget committee, it doesn't impact here, it doesn't impact there. We need to...
We made the case last night.
We need to kind of clean up some things on our end. Because you should see, if we got a budget of ninety thousand dollars for, for, and I didn't mean to correct, but on the, on the, um, the way we're setting up lacrosse is that they're gonna make an, an initial deposit, they're gonna sign the agreement, make an initial deposit, and Sherry should set up an account so that we are the keeper of those funds for those students or, or the booster club, whoever's bringing that money in. And then, as they wanna spend it down, as, or as we need to draw against it to pay for officials and fields and transportation, we're gonna bring that money in and then expend it out.
So, let me ask you a hypothetical question.
Hypothetical response.
No, I understand. You can tell me how you think it works. Wrestling coach says to the AD, I need these supplies, I need mouth guards, I need yada, yada, yada. The AD goes and buys it on his P card. You don't, I'm just...
Yeah, I know, no, no, I...
And so, the P card...
I know it's not so hypothetical.
The P card comes in, it's, it's to the AD or to whoever, whoever has a P card. Whether, if the coach might have a P card, I don't know how widely distributed they are. And if the coach is a teacher, they may very well have one. How do we know that, that a hundred and twenty-five dollar expenditure was for wrestling mouth guards? If, or, you know, you could substitute lacrosse, or, uh, I'm assuming that the drama production comes out of self-funded programs. I, I think there's another layer of detail that we haven't necessarily dug into because I think P cards are tied to the account. So, the athletic, regular programs account, you look at that and you say, oh, it was mouth guards, it's supplies.
No.
One twenty-five...
Because I, I, no. Because what happens is a P card, by your own policy, within, I think it's two days, you have to have a purchase order, which identifies what account's gonna be hit.
So, it says mouth guards.
The P cards don't address too.
So, it says mouth guards.
But it would say mouth guards, and it, on that purchase order requisition needs to identify the account to be expensed. Just because the P card reduces the athletic department doesn't...
Doesn't automatically run through?
Doesn't, no.
I think that's how we go up to five cylinders.
We're getting there. It...
There is a, there's a lot of moving parts in high school to make all of these things work. There really, really are.
Yeah.
I would like to...
It took us a while.
I would like to see personally, a separate account, other than student activities, where self-funded programs are depositing their revenue initially. Just to get rid of the whole float thing, and so...
Then you run into the problem, you don't have enough money to pay for the expenses.
And you gotta pay as you go.
Ask the questions for clarification from, because it was brought up at the budget committee, and I didn't quite understand. So, all our self-funding is in our, in our budget?
Correct.
And what's, that budget's approved, say like, it's fifty thousand dollars' worth of, um, self-funded athletics.
Sure.
The town approves that. But we're not paying for them, so I, I guess that's what I don't understand.
Because it's being offset when, like, this evening, you're gonna see projected, preliminary projection of revenue for next, for two thousand fifteen. You'll see what you approved in your fifteen oh one account, the ninety thousand seven seventy-three, is the exact amount that I will project for revenue to offset that expense.
Okay, so it's another, it's like another budget that's, that melts together.
Food service works the same way.
Food service works the same way, grants work, uh, federal grants work the same way. So, when you...
So, it's an income budget that you'll present, along with...
Right. So, when you do the calculation on the tax impact, there is no tax impact because it's, it's a wash, like it didn't exist. But again, maybe by the name of it causes some confusion because self-funded, we think that it's something outside. It's not. It's, it is a district program that you folks have to approve to bring in. So, once it's in, it's, it's really describing how we pay for it. So, it's not an obligation, if you will, that, that we don't get...
So, the budgets we've been looking at so far are just the expenditures, we just haven't seen the revenue.
Right. And you, and it's always the, exactly the same.
Hence why I argued wrestling, it's a revenue discussion. We've already approved the expenditures, it's already in the budget. It's just, do we wanna continue to book revenue as self-funded or add it to the regular tax funding?
So, when was the last time an outside auditor audited this student activities account?
Two thousand thirteen.
That's running ninety thousand dollars through a year.
It's audited every year.
It's part of the audit every year.
Student activities is, is part of your audit report.
I don't ever remember reading about that, but...
They do review it.
Yeah. It's, it's just a line item in the...
Yep.
Now, I, I believe you, uh, from what Steve told me at one point, they're looking at it as a sum, but they're, they actually establish individual accounts, or they can establish individual accounts under there.
There should, yeah, there should be, some districts, and I, and I do believe we have one account. Some districts, districts will have a separate account for each and every. It depends on the, the resources of who's doing it and how comfortable they are having separate checkbooks, um, doing it. But that's, it, it's student activity account, and, and Michelle and I were looking at, and I provided her with a booklet. It's, it's real clear from an audit standpoint, it's, it's not the district's money, it's not the town's money. It's money that students have, uh, earned, produced, for the purpose in which they determine how to spend it.
Well, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with that, with some of the money that's going in there. The parking of it...
Well, that's the way it should work.
But the parking is raised by the school board. Now, it is. We made the policy that said, every student that parked their car out there would pay the district. Now, the student activities fund would pay the district a hundred dollars for that right.
I, I don't necessarily agree with that, if, that it's a student activity fund.
That was, I understand, but that was...
That's policy you folks made, and, but...
Yeah.
And, and so, in, in essence, twenty thousand dollars of school board-generated revenue, based on policy, is going into an account of which we're, we're not controlling. And we're not, you know, doing anything with, with no oversight.
That's so, because it's a student activity account.
But it's not. The revenue is not student activity generated, I'm sure. I mean, the students didn't do anything to generate that activity. They had an expense for the obligation to drive their car to school. That's not an activity. No matter how you wanna look at it, that's not an activity.
Steve, look, I think I'm agreeing with you.
Well, we could certainly decide to move the money somewhere else. That's...
Well, my question is, we never, we never made the decision to give it to the, to the student funds.
Student activity.
I'm sure someone did at some point.
Now, when we only collected five dollars for the right to park your car, it probably wasn't a big issue because it only was five, two hundred cars times five bucks. But now, it's twenty thousand dollars.
So, uh, no, I, I understand. And I think it was originally because the students were paying it. I'm not arguing it makes it an activity, and it was five bucks or ten bucks or whatever it was, that's where it went. Conversely, you wanna make it district revenue, you're gonna have two hundred kids lined up here, out here one morning, waiting to see Michelle or somebody else. Conversely, you want to make it district revenue, you're going to have two hundred kids lined up here, out here one morning, waiting to see Michelle or somebody else, to pay their.
District, the, the school can handle the process.
John, you want it to be district revenue, the district should take care of it from day one.
We are not allowing the inmates to run the insane asylum.
Exactly.
So, but the, the funds are not a student activity fund. And if it, and if it's being used that way, then it needs to be accounted back to the school board, how it's being used.
It's, it's not, and, it's not in my control, that's, it's not in the district control, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
They usually come to us for approvals, though, to use it.
I was just going to say, last year, they came to us to.
They used it for venture, they used it for the, that program they use.
Well, it's also being.
What's the program, the gym?
Technically speaking, they don't have to come to us.
They don't.
No, they don't.
And I can, I'm, I'm, I'm more than confident that there is more expenditures in that account, if we went and got all the bank statements, in which we never were asked, and they spent substantial sums of money.
I would think it would be that way, because that's the way the account's structured. If you don't want the twenty grand to go in there, we'll change the policy so the twenty grand doesn't go in there. It's, it's that simple of an equation.
Well, part of what that money's being used for, too.
But John, I don't want to hear then, well, we need to make sure we got every dollar from parking, from the high school, if you want them to collect it. If you want to collect the revenue, just like all the other revenue that comes into the district goes to the S.A.U. office, parking revenue should go directly to the S.A.U. office. So, you can sign up to sit down there and fill out the parking pass, take their ten or twenty, or their hundred dollars, and hand them the pass, and put it in the till.
Well, I, no, I don't believe we'll go to that extent, because I think that's really insane.
But what happened if a self-funding program doesn't raise the necessary funds? Would they then take monies out of the, that fund you're talking about?
That's where we control it, because the only person that can cut a P.O. out of, um, the fifteen oh one self-funded account is either myself or the accountant.
I understand, but you're saying, like, some of the sports only put half the money up, then they pay the other half at the end of the year, but they already spent the money.
Well, they haven't spent it, because we won't process the P.O. unless we get the money. We're the gatekeeper.
So they put X amount of dollars upfront?
If they do.
Lacrosse is going to put it all upfront, and then there'll have to be some kind of reconciliation at the end.
But say wrestling, you said wrestling puts up fifty percent?
I believe that was the agreement we did with the wrestling, because they were trying to fundraise as they were starting the program, and we said, look, we know you guys aren't going to have twelve thousand dollars on day one. Can you give us, I think we actually asked for eight thousand dollars out of twelve, or something like that.
So before they, before they spent any more than that, they raised more monies to put it back into the fund?
Yeah.
But again, we, as the gatekeeper, to spend that money, because the checks are being cut at the district level, the, we'll process the purchase order after the check is, and, after the revenue has been realized to offset the amount of the P.O.
So if the wrestling club, let's say today they had no money in their account, yet tomorrow they're going to a meet, and they need transportation, they wouldn't go?
I would have to ask the athletic director, but technically they should not.
I would guess that the float in the student activities would cover it until they.
That's what I'm saying, so they end up using parking lot money.
That would be my guess. And then they backfill it after. Just like the town does when tax revenues are low, they draw their fund balance, out of their fund balance, to pay their bills, and then as the tax revenue comes in, they repopulate that, and in theory, that's what the auditor sees when they look at that account.
That's right.
So John, what day would you like to collect revenue next, in, in, in August? We could, um, come to your house.
There you go. Drive-by, right around the corner.
So, so thank you for preparing me for tomorrow night's budget committee, I appreciate the effort.
I'm going to come and talk to public input about this.
Thank you.
That's good.
I'm going to come and state that Mr. York has volunteered to accept revenue.
I, I, I.
I don't think we want to touch it, because then the budget committee gets their hands on it.
No, I, I, I just, I just, I understand that it's a student activities account, but at the same time, it's just running an awful lot of, of, of money through it.
I agree.
That I, that I, my question is, is, who's balancing the checkbook at the end of the month? When you're running, the amount of money that's being run through this activity, and this, it, it, it's just, it, it's one of the, it, it, to me, it's an account that you, you read about in the newspaper, and you say, how could that have occurred? How, how could, how could that have occurred?
Well, usually those accounts are not getting audited. They're usually not getting audited regularly.
There's two, you need two signatures for a check, too, right?
The auditors.
You need two people in on it.
Need two people to sign it, one has to be the principal or the assistant principal.
But I understand, I'm not, I'm not questioning anybody, any of the integrity of anybody that's doing it, I'm just saying that the checks and balance to me.
It's not.
Do not seem to be, and I don't think it's a school board issue, but I, but if I was the B.A., and says I'm responsible for.
I am not, but that's my argument with you, Mr. York, I am not responsible for student activity funds.
I went and reread the policy.
I am not, they are student activity fi, funds by the students, for the students, spent by the students, with the oversight from an appointed, um, um, teacher or staff member called, that's provided a stipend, and it's up to the building principal. They are responsible to, for the oversight of those funds, to make certain that they are reconciled on a monthly basis, I would even strongly suggest, and I will be putting forth afterward on my budgets, some recommended procedures to be followed with regards to student activity funds. And that will include monthly audit, it'll include, uh, that's maybe oversight, I can sign off on it, but again, it's not my responsibility, and there should be an end-of-year financial report given to the building principal, from each advisor that's assigned to those student-specific accounts.
You can audit it anytime you want, by the policy now.
I can, I can.
So I don't know that you want to, don't sign up for a monthly audit that you might not want to be doing
I'm not going to sign up.
In November, let's say, next year. But John, just to, to give you a little more angst, perhaps, student dues go in there, as well. So when they, when they pay class dues, they go in there, and.
I understand, yearbooks and everything gets run through there.
When, when senior class comes out, they actually write a check to the senior class president, who then takes the money for whatever the class was voted for and expends it, if it's, they typically do a scholarship donation or something like that, but.
Probably got to buy you a track ball.
I will not be, have my daughter lining up to pay you a hundred dollars next year, because she won't be here.
She'll be one-ten by next year.
I'm sure I'm going to be paying some university a whole lot more than that.
No wish you may have.
Next year.
Okay.
Do you have a transportation update for us, too?
Uh, it's just, it's, it's really, as we discussed with the budget committee last evening, Dr. Cochran and I kind of gave them an overview again of the predicament, if you will, regarding the current status of the, or lack thereof, of the, um, dialogue going on between first student, um, and, if you recall, the memorandum that was provided to the board, you know, I would strongly suggest that, uh, Dr. Cochran and I are in agreement that probably fifteen percent is a, is a, a better than, obviously, the three percent that was budgeted, and at first we came up with maybe around ten. But then we hear the ceiling could be as high as twenty-five, so, again, we're just really playing with percentages now, that we have no basis in which we can give you a really qualified response to that. So, the fifteen percent for our, um, transportation budget will, will equate into approximately seventy, seventy-one thousand dollars. That would be looking to increase the, the budget by.
Do we, do we need to vote to increase our personal line item, and then bring it to the budget committee, or can we just request that they do it?
Well, I think it ought to be a school board recommendation.
I tried to get Cindy to do it last night, she wouldn't.
Do you want line item?
They weren't going to.
Line item that is, by any chance?
Um, I can get those line items for you.
I think we should just do it next week, they're not in any rush, though.
They're not?
They left, they left the utilities alone, because.
Okay, can you just provide us the line numbers we need to vote on?
I was just going to suggest that I could give you, uh, in your packet for next week, the, uh, just a quick update on the water rate, um, uh, the budget committee was kind enough, Bill was kind enough to send me the specifics on the water rate increase. Right now, the, the rate increase is seven percent, um, and they're looking, uh, there's been a request to increase to seven percent by an additional five point two percent, bringing it up to twelve point two percent for the water rate. So, I'd be more than happy just to look at each of the line items that that will impact, increase it by, um, the difference between the, I think, the three percent that we budgeted and the twelve point two percent, that looks like it's, I guess the town is looking at that as their exposure as well, so.
Fourteen.
Do they use fourteen?
The utility can go up twelve percent, but we try to go up a half a percent, the budget committee's all over us.
Yeah, so, uh, I can, I can put that in your packet for next week, yeah, for the transportation at fifteen percent. Yeah, the, yeah, go up to twelve point two, would you like to go up to the fourteen? I, I suggest the twelve point two.
I'd do the twelve point two, but I think fifteen percent's going to be lean on transportation.
Do you want to get more?
I think, I'd rather go and say we want to reduce it, after the budget hearing, or at deliberative, if we can do it then, and it, that's a big if.
I agree. It's a lot easier to vote to get to reduce it by twelve thousand dollars than it is to raise it by the twelve, or have to cut more high school buses than you really want to.
Incrementally, um, twenty percent would be approximately a hundred and one thousand dollar increase, and twenty-five percent would be a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar increase.
So maybe bring us the fifteen and twenty percent, then.
Okay.
Make a motion somewhere.
And, and, and we, didn't we roughly calculate that a bus costs us forty thousand dollars, but what does a bus for C.H.S. cost us? I mean, it costs us forty thousand for a district for a year.
Right.
But what is one bus, one, one bus here?
Even if you save a run at C.H.S., it doesn't matter, because you, as, as Dr. Cochran said last night, you still need eleven buses, or whatever, twelve buses, whatever the number is, for the other three schools.
We're saving as part of the salary.
You're going to, you're going to save a little bit of any fuel surcharge.
An hour a day. Eighty hours.
You save that one run, you figure that one bus is, is making, uh, six runs a day, so you might be able to eliminate two. Uh, and that's some of the compression that we can look at, because as you saw, the first ridership numbers, you know, two, two students in the afternoon, and the late buses, Dr. Cochran has said, comes a half, uh, an hour after dismissal, or an hour and five minutes after dismissal.
I think the late buses get a lot of use, I mean, I, whenever I come up here.
Yeah, at C.H.S. they do, I don't know about L.M.S.
I mean, on my, my side.
What a short time period is before they leave.
It's, I think it's tough for anybody that's doing any of the athletics, or any of the drama or music things, when they have practices, to make it, but I think, from my, well, from my experience, there's either parents that are coming by, because the practice goes to six, or five-thirty, they stop on the way home, or it's a tight, pretty tight-knit team, and somebody gets a ride.
The after, the homework clubs and stuff like that, or the students that are taking the, the after-school buses, I would imagine.
We could, we could put the high school into self-funded and make it fund itself, John.
Right, do it on their student activity fee.
Rex ready to hit me over here, that's all I need, is to move that revenue into self-funded, too.
We can do it, we'll know exactly how to do it in a matter of a couple more weeks.
Alrighty. Warrants, first draft. The only thing I noticed was, for Article Three, we're on establishment capital reserve, right, we're just replenishing.
Yeah, I think that's just a regurgitation from what we originally used.
You could just tweak it anyway, I'm just kind of copying and pasting.
Instead of establish, it should be to replenish, yeah?
That word probably doesn't work for D.R.A., they probably have some specific.
They do, it's simply to add, the, you would have in the, in the warrant article, uh, when it was established, so that if someone were to go back and see the original, uh, originating warrant article that established the fund, so that has to be in the warrant article, and it's just simply to, uh, to take, whether you're going to do it out of your unreserved fund balance or through taxation.
And has that always been fifty thousand, or has that changed?
You can do whatever you want.
You can do whatever you want.
We did fifty.
I've asked a question going back, as far as, you were just talking about buses and.
Sure.
Parking. So the monies that a student pays for busing comes to us? To offset the cost of transportation?
I think so, right.
I think so.
It's a good question.
Collected by the same people, so it probably doesn't.
We can change that, John.
I can, I can find out for you, I, I don't know for certain on that.
Now we're forty thousand dollars.
I don't think the bus is raised that much.
You don't think what?
I don't think the bus fees raised twenty thousand dollars.
I think it's about a hundred and seventy-some parking spaces, which would be over seventeen thousand.
But I think the bus.
But how many bus passes?
Bus ridership is lower.
Yeah.
I think it's less than, less than five thousand dollars.
I can check on that, right?
Well, so then that's weighing fifty kids.
Yeah.
More than that.
It's a hundred bucks.
Look at the ridership, but look at the, look at the ridership that came out, it's, I don't think there's more than fifty kids a day that ride buses.
That would be a very good question. Seventy vehicles traveling on average in two kids a, a car.
When I pull it, there's no two kids getting out of most of those cars.
But have you sat in the line of the parents?
No, no, yeah, I.
That's a hundred and fifty parents dropping kids off?
Well, the reason I ask, I mean, it, I mean, that money should go right back towards the cost of transportation. But then, why wouldn't we take the seventeen thousand, whatever, from parking, put that towards transportation also?
John's willing to collect the money, so.
I'm not. But the front people in that office are more than willing to collect the money.
They collect it for the bus.
They do, they can collect it for parking.
Actually, I think the check gets written to Campbell High School.
It is, there's, there's no doubt in my mind, that we're not seeing any of transportation.
I think you see bus revenue.
I'm ninety-eight percent certain that the revenue from the bus pass does go into the general fund revenue account.
So we get a check.
For transportation.
You can show us.
You get an individual check, I think, from each person.
That's what I'm saying, no, you don't, no, I was going to Campbell High School.
As many checks as you want, Mr. York.
No, do you get, do you get a check from Campbell High School?
I'm going to write you a check right now.
That offsets the number of passes that they sold for the buses.
No.
And since they don't write it to S.A.U., they ran it to Campbell High School.
It may go to S.A.U. for processing, in other words, Campbell isn't processing to the general fund revenue account.
That I know.
So I will need to.
Can you check?
I can check for you.
What about those warrant articles?
I like them. I like them a lot.
Warren Article Three, I think it was unfortunate last year that we talked about using that format instead of the percentage, and then some members of the budget committee said they preferred the other format.
We'll see this year, whether that holds true.
I, I, my suggestion would be to stick with that format, it's a known number, you don't have to worry about, everybody knows, we've had them in the past.
John, you want to put a warrant article about where the parking fee goes? Now I'm just poking the bear over there, that's.
Do we want to use it from, uh, end of your funds, or do we want to raise the fifty thousand?
It should be end of your funds.
You got to use end of your funds.
Yeah, we don't want.
I think you have to for establishing this.
Oh, do you? Well, it's already established, though.
But even for replenishing, I think you have to use this format for the D, for the, from the D.R.A.
B.A. shaking his head no.
No, we don't.
Sorry.
That's what we were told before.
You can fund it in two ways, through taxation, or through unassigned fund balance, at the end of the year.
You'll never fund it through taxation.
That's, that's the, the direction we need from you folks, you want it unassigned, but you can actually, um, put it as a, as an appropriation through taxation.
Do we, do we word it so that it, it, um, it continues until it gets built up to fifty thousand dollars, so let's say the end of the year fund balance, then the year's only twenty-five thousand dollars, and we decide to use that?
I think you can do that.
Or do you have to go back each year and ask?
And we can't use it, right?
Because it's, it's, it's a year-over-year appropriation, you can't carry, unless it's a bond, you can't carry the appropriation year-over-year.
Unless it's that fancy percentage.
And the, and the key is, we, if you have more than one fund that you're seeking, uh, it'll go in order of which they are presented on the warrants. So if, if you had two warrants, each seeking fifty thousand dollars each for two separate funds, and at the end of the year, we only had sixty-five thousand unassigned fund balance, it'll fund the first fifty thousand, and it'll take the remaining balance and put that into the, to the second.
Just realize, if they'd have voted that process, and that process has been in place, that seven and a half, twelve and a half percent, and that twenty-five percent transportation issue, it wouldn't be an issue.
We would have covered it.
Because we'd have had the money in our funds, be able to absorb that and cover that. But you see, we weren't smart enough, but really, we were, so.
That was very confusing, we, uh, for what it's worth, the three districts that I represented last year, none of them had it passed, because it was very confusing, we, we had trouble understanding.
I think we got language changes up until, like, the day of the budget hearing, I think.
E.R.A. was real slow coming out with their, um, interpretation of that, I would say, so. And the, the problem was, it was accumulative, was it capped? Just, there was a lot of questions that we couldn't answer.
Very weird. I knew it was going to be voted down, told you guys it was a loser.
Was it close?
It, what?
Can you give me the lottery numbers?
In the retrospect, in, in retrospect, it may have been voted down, but the reasons it was voted down are flawed. It was the correct process, and maybe we couldn't have explained it correctly, because we didn't have all the information, but what it was setting up was the same sort of fund. The wording of where, the percentage and stuff, I think, was very, was confusing, but the idea behind it, and the fundamental process of it, was to allow districts, so that they're not in this exact position of, the people, company we use to do our transportation is now going out for bids, and we have no idea what our transportation cost could be, but we could set a budget that's not going to absorb that cost, or, don't say anything in the water, so basically what we're doing, what that warrant article was, was to begin the process of setting a district up not to have that exposure. And it's not the district that has the exposure, it's the taxpayer that has exposure, because they're going to get hit with large increases, because, well, we all know the issues that happened last year, so, I will go back into that.
And, and the, the town is looking at pulling money out of their reserve to help offset tax. And, and the town is looking at pulling money out of their reserve to help offset tax rate this year as well, out of their year-end reserve, out of their, uh, fund balance.
Fund balance, yeah. So any more comments on warrant articles?
For the bus, yeah, for the car, us, we know the check is written to Campbell High School for the buses.
Okay.
Because we have one right here on the computer.
How much is it?
A hundred bucks.
Do you have the backside of the check to see who deposited?
Yeah, I do, yeah, we do.
Campbell High School.
Campbell High School, student fund.
Student fund.
There you go.
Oh, man.
It's been audited.
We don't have, and we haven't had for the last several years, the special language, special meeting language.
In case the.
For collective bargaining, you have to have it for the operating budget, I think.
I said we added this year. We always don't add it because we're worried about the perception, if it fails, then we try and rework it and come back, and people throw the rums in there and say, you're trying to pull one over us. I say if it fails this year, we're going on three years of the contract, we need to try and go back and have a special meeting, personally.
I don't think so. You get one bite at the apple.
Yep.
That's, that's my two cents worth, the board, you could, Derek, you could certainly motion to add that warrant article, and we can have the debate and vote and get everybody on record, your call.
When we actually have.
I would second that for discussion, if you wanted to do that.
When we get a warrant article or a contract, I will motion to add it, and you can second it.
I will, and I'll discuss it with you.
It'll be a motion for discussion, motion for discussion.
And I said, eh, no, that's okay.
I'm sure we'll have some community input just for mentioning.
I, I just wanna have the discussion, that it's a board decision, somebody can say, why isn't it there? And we say, the board discussed it and voted on it.
No, I, I.
We used to always have it.
You gotta back me up.
And I don't know, the one time we had a special meeting that was even, um.
That was really special.
Streamlined by the state.
That was very special though.
Yes, I'm just saying, there were still people that were irritated that we had that special meeting.
That's true.
The not-so-special special meeting.
Any more discussion on warrant articles?
Yes, are, are you gonna bring any warrant articles forward for, um, positions?
Um, depending on what happens in the rest of the budget.
They're voting technology and GMS tomorrow night, you said?
They are.
I suspect we'll know by next Wednesday.
The timeframe is for our responsibility for getting warrant articles to the budget committee for their review and stuff for their meeting.
I believe warrant articles have to be posted.
By the hearing, right?
Seven days prior.
Seven days before the hearing, I believe.
Four, seven or fourteen?
Around that.
That means we would have the eighth, I don't even know, we're meeting on the eighth.
We've done that before, we've, we've actually raked out to the wire before.
With warrants?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, it, it, it.
Yeah, eighth of Wednesday, so.
We, we could literally make our final decision on the eighth, which means that they meet on the ninth, does that mean, if they, because there's, some of these, they may need to vote, so if they meet on the ninth and vote, um, is that seven days if they're doing their meeting on the sixteenth, if it goes up that Friday?
Well, depends on the paper it goes into, the HLN, you have to get it in on a Tuesday, so it'll be out on Friday to make the seven.
Does that have to be posted in print, or does it?
It has to be posted in two places, in print and another, we usually put them on the website, we'll put it in print, we'll put it at the town hall, we'll put it everywhere, we put it in all schools.
As long as it's posted by.
No, you can't, but you can't get it to HLN because they, um.
You can get it to the HLN, but we can get it to the union leader.
I, I don't believe you need to put it in the newspaper, you need to post it in town in two conspicuous locations.
And we post it at the library.
We'll vote on it the eighth and post it in the front door an hour later.
Oh, and put it on all the. Well, the budget committee, the, the budget committee on some of these items, they will weigh in a vote, so I think it's, it's, is it, is it their vote, does, is it, is it our responsibility to post it with or without their vote? And then if they vote, we can then add theirs?
Have to post it, yes.
So it's, it's our warrant articles, with or without their recommendation, we could post it on Thursday, and then if they vote, we could add it and change it.
Because many ti, sometimes they change their vote at the budget hearing, and the warrant articles have to be, you know, the recommendation has to be changed, so I'll literally go out and repost after that.
After, okay, alright.
The final date for posting notice of budget hearings under RSA thirty-two-five and one ninety-five-twelve shall be the second Tuesday in January, so that's when they have to post their information.
That's the fourteenth.
That's the fourteenth.
Well, they have to post the notice of the hearing, I don't think they have to provide any information prior to the hearing, because the hearing is only the review and question and answer session, because they say the budget submission date, um, and the final date for submission of petition warrant articles under RSA thirty-nine-three and one ninety-seven-six shall be the second Tuesday in January. So, and then they have to do it by the third Tuesday in January, so I'm, I'm assuming they would want ours by the same date as the petition warrant articles, although we have time to act on petition warrant articles if we want to, or if we're required to, I guess, depending on, on the state. And then the final posting, we have, the, uh, warrants and budgets shall be posted and copies available on or before the last Monday in January for deliberative.
So from the district, is there anything else that you guys have been thinking about that you would like to see on warrant articles?
I'll abstain on that one. I think you're good. Okay. Pending tomorrow night.
Pending, yeah, I think tomorrow is probably the big one, right? Does, does anyone else wanna see something on warrant, warrant article?
I mentioned to John, after the last budget committee meeting, I, I just questioned, um, the warrant article that's always brought up by old Jason and Chris as far as putting on new positions, whether or not we like possibly look to eliminate that.
It's not a bad idea. Would we wanna spearhead that though, or would we want the community to spearhead that? How would you even go about doing that, would just have something that rewords?
Have a warrant article that just says, re, rescinds, I mean, that, John, John Burnell brought up that, you know, it's a petition warrant article, it, it carries no legal binding on anybody as advisory, and it was brought about at a time when the budget committee and the, uh, school board were at major odds with each other over, over, over processes.
How's that different?
And, well, no, I, I sort of argued that that's not true, I mean, today, I mean, I think that the present school board and budget committee have done a very good job, they may not always agree on the process, but I think that the school board has, um, at least for the four years I've been on, it, it brought budgets that are very, very close to, um, level funded, um, and yet we have money left over, but a lot of that is, is, is unanticipated income that reflects on that, and, you know, and I think for the most part, some of the cuts the budget committee made were, you know, I didn't agree with them because they weren't what we agreed on as a group, but, you know, I don't think they were near-earth shattering and stuff, so, um, and I think, you know, the, the, the voters have looked at that and, you know, they've, um.
And I think if you look at several of the positions we've put on, like, over the last several months, that probably saved the town money.
Yeah, especially when last year, yeah.
And I think as a school board and superintendent, that we, we know what is needed for those positions.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think it's a great idea.
I disagree.
Why shouldn't the town be able to vote?
Well, because John's saying that it's because of the budget committee and the school board being at odds, but it really isn't, it was because the voter turned down several things that still cropped up into the budget. So you vote down things and then they come back.
Yeah, but they, but it was all, it was.
That's no means no, that was no means no, I think, there, there was a, I believe there was a legitimate disagreement about positions that got cut out of the budget at the school board level, or at the budget committee level, then ultimately the school board added them the next year, because the budget committee can't remove a line item from the budget, all they can do is reduce funding, they can't cut a program, they can cut the funding for a program.
The reason they could, the school board could do that was because the budget was so new, being Campbell being there, and, and there was enough extra dollars in other lines that created the process where that could occur, and I would think everybody would agree that's not the case.
Yeah, I don't think we have that problem now.
That's true.
And, and so, so I think that, you know, they, they, people are laying their hats on that, saying this is what the people wanted, that's what the people wanted eleven years ago, and we haven't really seen that same anger, and I think that, you know, people have done a very good job in trying to, uh, fix that perception, and I, and I, and again, I think that it's, since it's not a, um, it's an advisory thing, and I think that people are taking it too far, in the sense that, um, I don't even believe they're executing the warrant article correctly.
We're gonna have a long discussion tomorrow, John.
Across the aspects of what that warrant article calls for.
Whether you agree with it or not, in the end, for us to put that warrant article up there, it looks really bad.
Well, so the other piece to that puzzle is, as John said, Campbell just opened in two thousand two, two thousand one, and was throwing the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth model where the ninth grade came in, and then they added, then the next year, they moved up to ten, and so they were adding staff at a rather rapid rate to staff up the high school, and I think when the last, when the first one came about, they were almost done staffing the high school, and I think there was some disagreement because the school board wanted to do some things beyond the base that was established in Campbell that wasn't required by law, and the first one kind of, from a, from a littler reading, said no position or expanded program, so if you wanted to say, oh, we're gonna teach physical science, you'd have to go onto a warrant article if you followed that warrant article to the letter versus the one that's there now, is if you're required to offer these courses, you can, or, um, but you need a teaching position for something required, you can add it in to the budget and get the budget committee to agree.
But only if they agree.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, no, it's not, because you could come back the next year.
Their argument is that it's special, so, so if you needed to add a science teacher.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, because you wanted to teach a, a science that presently is not taught, their argument is that has to go to a warrant article.
Well.
Because it's.
Correct, that's, if you wanna follow the advisory.
Unless it's a special services, it's gotta go directly to a warrant, but that's not the process we're in, and when, and, and, and it's amazing, we talked about two or three different positions and things that we're doing, and one hundred percent in agreement that we should do the position, one hundred percent, not one person spoke out and said, no, you shouldn't do that, but they all said, we're not gonna vote for it because in two thousand and three, there was an advisory petition that said, this is where we're at, and I think that they're, they're handicapped to being able to make decisions because they feel handicapped, to, that, that making a decision would, would be violating the trust of the town, of which it was only a recommendation, it's non-binding, it has no legal foundation, and it's binding everybody that's moved into this town in the last ten years that had nothing to do with it.
We've still put in positions despite that, so.
Right, that, well, that's, that was gonna be my point, they can say, we're gonna remove the funding for, for the science teacher, because it's, you guys should put it on a warrant, you don't put it on a warrant, you get to the summer and you hire a science teacher because that's what the board believes is the right thing to do, because it's a bottom-line budget, and you can argue that we violated the spirit of that warrant, and that might be true, but no means no, while several people think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, I, I think it, it has changed the way boards all across the state, this one included, as to how they deal with those positions, because in some cases, you can't afford to put the warrant article and have it fail and still be able to provide a service that you need, you believe you need to provide. You can argue whether it's a required service, um, I mean, when I was, one year when I was on the budget committee, there was, uh, it was a discussion about, um, uh, adding a math teacher, and they said, well, math teachers aren't, it's not a required position, I said, it doesn't, because it's not for state or federal standards, and I said, kneecap, we're not meeting the kneecap standard, this, this is in direct, um, attempt to solve that problem, to get to a federal and a state standard, and they still disagreed that that was a position that should be in the, it was the math coordinator, it wasn't a, a teacher, it was the math coordinator.
Those two years ago.
You know, there, that's a state standard, we're trying to meet that state standard, we believe this is how we meet that state standard, and the budget committee still said no.
Do you have a copy of those, the last warrant, the last one, the two thousand and three one, or, do you guys have a copy of the, the advisory warrant?
It was two, it was two, either two thousand and two, two thousand and three.
Maybe you guys can look at them, and maybe you need Gordon, I don't know, but to come up with some sort of language.
Gordon's weighed in, he's weighed in before.
Oh, no, but maybe we need, if we, if we're serious about putting up a warrant to rescind it, maybe we, you guys can toy around
I think it looks bad for us to do it.
with putting language.
Voters will tell us if it's bad.
And it would be, well, so what's the, think it through though, so what if it's.
I have thought it through, it is a double-edged sword.
What if it's defeated, does that make, is, does the defeat of it make it be a requirement?
No.
I don't know. Not if we put it out.
If we put one out and it gets voted down, I don't believe that.
I don't know, it's an interesting question to ask Gordon.
Yeah.
If we say, should all these happen, and they say, no, does that mean you can't do it?
And, and then, John, now it's been, it's been held a second time, and then, now it's even stronger in the voter's mind.
No, there is a, there is definitely a.
We don't think so means we don't think so, as opposed to no.
We don't think so, we're not sure.
Depends how many no's are out there, same amount that were in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, if they're less than, it's, it's better for us.
Yeah, it's less, it's less no.
Is that what Dr. Cochran said a little while ago?
So why don't we put on an article to have a special meeting, just to take up the topic of this warrant article?
No, I think, I think that, um, it needs to be discussed more of how you would do that.
Oh, I agree.
I understand what you're saying, you know, but.
That's what I'm saying, maybe they can put together some language to show us.
There's gonna be, yeah, what the voter wants is the checks and balances, and, you know, maybe this board wouldn't do things that the voter didn't want, or would take the spirit of the law well, but we don't know who's gonna be here five years from now.
Exactly, we don't, we don't know how many people of the fifteen hundred that voted are still here.
There's four checks.
Or if they still feel the same way, but we could just say what our president always says, it's settled law, it shouldn't be changed.
At one end of the continuum, you've got a real concern that if that check and, and balance system is not there, it could be taken advantage of, on the other hand, you have situations, since I've been here, where you have to apologize for saving the town money and being efficient with your money, it just.
I understand, I have seen that side too, yes, however, like I said, it, you, you need to assure the voter that there are checks and balances there, and just turning that down, I, it looks bad for us to present it, and I think.
Okay, so could you guys at least get us a, a sample of what that might look like?
Gordon, Gordon will probably say you don't wanna do that.
Oh, I know that's what he's gonna say.
He's gonna say you don't wanna do that because you will limit yourself, but I think we should certainly get him to say that. I'd like to make Gordon think.
Think.
I'll even earn that, that hour's worth of wages.
Any more, uh, warrant discussion? Impact fee, legal opinion. It says confidential attorney-client communications, do we wanna discuss this?
I don't know that we have to discuss the opinion, we could certainly discuss the impact fee request, in light of the opinion.
In light of the opinion.
I think the confidential notice means we wanna sell the same memo to somebody else later. I didn't say that.
I'm not at all convinced we should press with that impact fee request, and if, if it is something that we believe is needed, then that's probably something that should be a. that should be a warrant article.
So should we make that information, that request a warrant article? I would say yes.
What was the total amount, 210,000?
I think there's some other things that, you know, yeah, we might want to look beyond just the electronics if we want to do that.
And then, my question is, instead of trying to do it all at one time, should we break it out and say we're going to do, uh, X amount is in GMS and bring that this year, and LMS?
That's tough. Just envision something happening at the school you didn't do anything to.
Is this, is this something that really should be in the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
That's the first thing I thought of, too.
Rather than just dumping it onto the voter and saying, this is what we want, we have a well-thought-out plan of how we're going to go about it.
Well, as, as you know, I think what people wanted to do is look at building systems as opposed to building little components. And I think, you know, security, safety and security really is a system that the school has. It deals, it has personnel aspects, it has building aspects, it has electronic aspects. I think it would be an appropriate topic for the committee.
I think so, too. And then you've got a natural, um, backup for why you're requesting for these things. And quite frankly, a lot of them, you know, the voter's going to realize, yeah, you know, you need to have security at the schools. We live in a different world these days, um, but you just want to have.
Well, there's a couple of things in there. Some of it is telecommunications, and we have two schools that have very antiquated telecommunications systems, um, CHS and LMS. Um, and we have, those two schools have no security. Um, and then, I mean, CHS is at least 15 years old and, and, um, and, and has some security in it. Um, and, um, you know, and I, and while I agree that, that the, the Building and Committee, it may be something for them, the bottom line is what you're putting off is until, um, uh, July of 2015, being able to address any of these issues. And I, and I don't believe that that is, um, uh, fair to at least two of the three schools, because, I mean, Campbell was more or less about adding some cameras in areas where we had blind spots. But the other two schools, it was allowing teachers to be able to communicate from their classrooms, which they can't do today, and providing security, um, if something were to occur in both of those, those, those buildings with, you know, the, the, the passes and, and, you know, for the, the, the fifth grade students that are walking into the school and being able to keep an idea of who's opening and who's closing the doors and things. And I, I firmly believe that putting this out a year and a half is too long. And, you know, if, if, if we come to the voters and we give them an amount, we say, this is what it's for, and they go, no, because we don't have enough information, well, then okay, we have a year to get the information right and go to them because they made that decision. But I, I think we're sending a, an incorrect message, um, when we have this information and we have this recommendation, and, and I think, well, I, I know that some of these things are needed, or feel they are needed. And, um, um, and while I understand the, the apprehension of putting something like this as a warrant article, um, I believe it's the correct manner to do and let, let the voter say.
Well, then, I, I would advise that we break these out and not have just one lump sum.
I'd like to see the breakdown of the costs, just because we might choose to do GMS and LMS and not CHS in this first one, just because CHS already has cameras and FOB systems and stuff like that. The 210 seems high to me.
There was a proposal six or seven years ago, five or six years ago, to add cameras to LMS and GMS, and it failed.
Yeah.
And at, at that point, the doors were unlocked at the school, the main doors were unlocked.
I think today is so much different than it was even a year ago.
But I, no, I'm, I'm just explaining the history, and we put buzzers in with the, it wasn't a camera system, it's one camera so that the people in the office could see who was standing at the door. There was outrage that, you know, we had violated no means no, we had put in a security system, we said, look, all we did was put a lock on the door with the ability to unlock the door in the office and for the person in the office to see who's at the door. That's like the most basic step that we took, to make sure all the doors are locked, you can still get out, and that nobody could get in without somebody buzzing them in and acknowledging that they let them in. But I think, uh, breaking it up, I, I don't know that that's the right idea. I think you want to come in with a system that's, you know, connected and is the same, because if, let, let's just say you put them out and you get one and not the other, because, you know, the LMS parents came out to vote, and that passes and GMS fails. And then you come back the next year, you know, you're going to have a, you're going to have slightly different equipment at GMS, and now you're asking the technology guys and, and everybody else to maintain different systems.
I don't know, it might be, I wasn't thinking in terms of school, but maybe by items, so, you know, like the key fobs. Put that over separate, but I, I just feel like if you dump out a $210,000 warrant article, they're not going to do it.
I mean, there's, there's three basic aspects to it. One is the camera systems. One is the access control, and one is the communications. And I think what recent events, recent tragic events have shown us, is that if somebody wants access to a school.
They'll get it.
They'll get it. The communication system may be the highest priority. I mean, if somebody wants to get into Bill.
That would be the best way to go, is to break it out.
You could drive a truck through a door. If everyone wanted to do to the door, that's nice, but if somebody wants to get through the door, they'll get through the door.
And that way there, if you do it across all the schools, they're all.
Yeah.
On the same.
Well, CHS already has a communication system, right? Because they already have voice-over IP and they already have.
Well, yeah, they can, they can get to each teacher in the room, I think, through the phone.
So it's, it's LMS and GMS that don't have that, right?
The Charlie Brown P A system at GMS, whoa, 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 you know, that's kind of what you hear in some of the rooms.
It's the tin cans.
Yeah. You know, when you go over there, it's like vacuum tubes, it takes an hour and a half to warm up.
Is that why we see that glow in GMS every morning? Kids come walking down the hall.
I mean, we joke about it, but that's, I mean, that's literally, it's a big old flip switch to get to the P A into a certain room.
Well, how many meetings do we have this week? Four?
Three. Three, four?
Plus negotiations, plus the LMS thing.
No meeting Friday.
Can we, you know, that's probably nice of me. Could we try and have the committee meet?
Buildings and grounds.
Right after the new year? And, and decide if there's a priority. I can see if I can get, uh, the background information about the types of systems, what would a warrant article look like, decide what the focus would be.
So we need it by January eighth, right?
I was going to say, you're going to have to meet the second or third.
Thursday, the second is the school day.
We can try that.
The thing is, even if they disagree, maybe we're still probably going to go for it anyway, though, so I don't know.
Is there some, um, someone we can have put some things together for us? Okay.
Is there a way to, um, request in a warrant article, um, that, um, that it be something that is spread across two years? So that we raise and appropriate $210,000 to be spent in 105,000 in a year, in 2014, 15, and 105 thou, can it be asked in that type of a warrant article? And so it's not.
You'd want to kind of cost things out so you have it.
Well, I, no, I understand that, but, 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 but without that, with, with that in mind, so that they know that that's, it's, yes, it's, yes, it's an appropriated expense, but it's going to hit two budget cycles. Are we allowed to, are we allowed to do that in a warrant article?
You can put the warrant article then and have it be non-lapsing and have it be period specific. So in other words, the, the warrant would ask for a specific amount to be spent over the next year and a half as projects can be completed.
You can't split up the, the, the raising of the money over two years?
But it would be, if you did that, it would be over two budget seasons, is what I'm saying, two different budgets.
Well, but the money's going to, no, it's, it's more as, it's more related to the accomplishment of the task of the warrant than it is the, the funding of the warrant. So in other words, the funding of the warrant, the appropriation has to happen in that fiscal year. But if you had a project, for instance, that wouldn't be completed by June, it may go into the summer.
Which is, which you can come by the money for the next year.
You could have it non-lapsing to that period specific.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so come back with some ideas for us. Revenue projections, default budget?
Those did not make it into your packet, but they are preliminary, and I'll share those with you this evening. Um, as they come around, you'll see that, um, I don't know. I'll go through it briefly. We're looking at a little bit, based on the numbers that we have for this year, tuition to, um, we're, we're looking at a little bit trends here as well in tuition, and we try to look at how many families are, uh, tuitioning in students to the, to the district right now. So there's a projection there. Transportation fees, which I thought, Mr. Borg, was your, uh, answer to your question, but is, I guess not, based on the endorsement of the back of your check. Earnings on investments, we're projecting a, a decrease there. We have actually, um, put a new system in place for receiving our appropriation from the town whereby they, they submit via ACH now. They used to send a check to us, which, um, wasn't good on both ends, but unfortunately now, on our earnings capacity, that money isn't coming in, and it's, the, the float, if you will, in that money has been, has been shrunk down because, but when it comes in, it's a lot faster and it's going out just equally as fast. Food service sales, we're looking at a little bit of decrease, which again is, is a direct impact on the, um, 3,774, which was decreased for the operating budget for food sales. Student activities is your 9,0773, and I'm going to skip right over that. Uh, other local sources would be funds coming into the district on, uh, for instance, for the rental of classroom space or the gymnasium, and so on and so forth. Those are other miscellaneous-type rental income. The highlighted areas are question marks that I still am waiting on information from some, uh, either internal sources or external sources. School building aid, uh, I'm projecting right now that, that that will be a direct result, the same percentage, if you will, as the reduction of the bond payments. I'm not sure on that, so I am waiting for a call back from DOE on that. Cat aid, I need a little bit more information, that is going to be impacted a little bit, I believe, because as you've heard through the budget process, we've had a number of students that have returned, uh, from out of district placement, which obviously will impact cat aid. Vocational aid is, is pretty much the same, child nutrition is the same there as well. And the federal, um, I, I'm not comfortable with that number for the federal program grant, and I, I do need to meet with Dr. Heron tomorrow, if, if she's in, or whenever she's in, and I can grab her and we can kind of go over that a little bit. Child nutrition is, is the same. Disability programs, uh, projecting a little bit, um, of, of a decrease there based on the budget proposal that, that has been put forth. Medicaid, uh, distribution, we're looking at a little bit of. I think there's a significant difference with federal program grants. Truly didn't think there would be significantly different from, from the existing year. Well, that's, that's what was in, that's why, I mean, I got to get to her and see what, I think we have a disconnect somewhere, maybe from a carryover.
So you think it'll be higher than $55,000?
I don't know. I hope so. I hope so. That's why it's highlighted. I, I need to get with her, I, does it, that's, highlight in this case is my question mark. I need, I need some additional information from other sources.
Isn't that Title I? Is that in there?
Part of it could be Title I. Title I, 2A. I think Title I only was 70, $80,000, I think, not even. You should see, I haven't heard anything from the DOE that would suggest they're going to change any programs, so, you know, we, we would just lose whatever the population is, assuming that, that our free and reduced lunch stays at about 10%. Frank, catastrophic aid, the call for that, um, in the fall was to expect something lower than, than prior years. Have we had anything more solid on that? We haven't seen anything more solid. This is cat aid through the years has always been.
I say that every year.
There's been a calculation based on what you are eligible to be reimbursed on a cat aid, and then some percentage of that because the state underfunds their commitment, their, their commitment there. So it has been around 70 to 72%. This is a projection based on the, uh, population dropping a little bit as far as, uh, the, the external, if you will, the out, outside, um, district placements, uh, which will lower obviously the number of the per student there. Uh, just the last piece there is the Medicaid distribution. Um, I can get the specifics on it, but we used to be able to utilize, uh, the, uh, par educators that were actually riding the buses, we, we were seeking reimbursement through Medicaid on that, that is no longer eligible, and I know transportation has, uh, taken a hit there as well, so. Education grant, uh, just a 2% reduction based on this year, uh, potentially because of the, uh, decrease to enrollment, that may impact the, uh, average daily membership. That is part of the calculation for the adequate, the, uh, education grant. Preliminary, I'll back more information update as information is provided, and hopefully next week we'll have some, uh, additional updates for you on those areas that are, are highlighted. In terms of, uh, the education grant, that's adequacy? Yes. Right. I think 2%, we originally, Steve and I last year projected the five, um, because it's, it was the maximum that you could lose, and, uh, I think, uh, the board, as well as the Budget Committee, thought that that was a, a little harsh, and I think we moved it back to 98.5% of prior year. But I, I, I wouldn't get too far away from 98, 98 to 98.5%. The state average is going to be 2%, some years will be better than that, some years will be worse. So, I mean, if our numbers show that we're growing again during the school year, like we did last year, 98, maybe 98.5 may be doable again, but.
So based on this, we're, we, we've lost a half a million dollars in revenue as an estimate?
Well, if you look at, if, uh, if the 200,000 from federal programs, I suspect we'll, we'll, we should be there, we're down to about three, um, 300,000 in revenue. Now, in, in the case of catastrophic aid, Frank points, so the reason that you're down revenue is you're not sending as many students out of district, you're in very expensive placements, so.
And you're down school building aid because you're not making a full bond payment. So in theory.
It's offset.
That should wash.
Yeah, it's an offset.
We're still paying the same percentage of, you know, I think we get 30% is what we, we get. So we're still getting the 30% on what, on the, uh, payment, it's just the payment's lower, but, I mean, the, the one that's going to, going to hit the tax rate for sure is the adequacy aid at the bottom. If it's, if it's truly 117 less, that's.
That's a, that's a true impact on to the bottom line.
It's a dime on the tax rate at least.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Uh-huh? Default budget? Again, this is a very preliminary, I wanted to get it into your hands, and as you folks have dealt with in the past, my first experience with you in developing a default budget, everybody brings their own, if you will, interpretation of the RSA and how, uh, Mr. Grett has been kind enough to already email me the presentation, which I will certainly look at from LGC. I actually think I attended that, uh, same one as well, that, uh, was LGC's interpretation. So again, this is my ability to recommend to the board as I go through, uh, utilizing, again, our interpretation, my interpretation, if you'll, based on past experience, as to, um, the existing level of services and being able to go through, and you'll see some by highlight, some of the major areas where obviously maintaining, uh, the staffing level of the recommendations from the Special Education Department for the teacher and the par educators. And I did want to, uh, share with the board, um, just if you allow me just a moment, just to read this, um, because it's, again, another interpretation of, uh, of the RSA regarding, um, um, the default budget. And it, it states after removing all special warrant articles at one time. And it, it states after removing all special warrant articles and one-time items, one would then adjust the default budget for changes in bonded debt, contractual other obligations previously incurred, and items mandated by law. Bonded debt would be increased if there was a new debt authorized by the voters such as bond and so on and so forth. If current debt payments decline or interest or principal in the succeeding year. Examples of contractual other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law would, would be employee benefits previously approved, employer labor contract increases, facility requirements for providing a healthy and safe learning environment, and special education costs driven by individualized education programs per state and federal guidelines. That's another interpretation of, of the development of default budget, which in this case, it clearly, I was following that as well, to incorporate those positions that the director of special education has put in for next year.
So what about, so course reimbursement for non-union? You sure a decrease of thirteen thousand, shouldn't that just be a zero and be twenty-six across the board?
Again, I was, I was extracting the recommend, the board's recommended.
Oh, you took our recommends for the operating budget and applied those deductions?
Which is not contractual.
Yeah.
If the board has put for, again, this is my interpretation, just my suggestion to you as, as an entity, is that, my interpretation was if it's non-contractual, if it's, like for, for instance, tuition reimbursement, if we feel that we could live with a lower figure, that's, that's the amount that I move forward now. That's again, my recommendation to you, you folks, the board can, can bring it back to the same level as we funded last year.
How about utilities, water? You have no increase?
Um, utilities are pretty much budgeted, you know, that's again, is that contractual? Do we know, can we use less? I mean, there is so much.
I'm just thinking of the increase that's gonna occur.
Right.
Twelve percent increase.
The, the, our attorney has told us in the past that things like utilities, you can, you can tie back to adequate education. Under, you have to provide certain facilities within the school. Water being one, sewer being another, heat being another, electricity being another. You can argue whether that's a liberal interpretation of the statute.
Right.
But the state sets minimum standards you have to meet by law, and they say you've gotta have a healthy environment. Who, you know, do you wanna go debate healthy environment? You know, is, is sixty-two non-healthy and sixty-six is healthy? His, his statement was that if you were reasonable in that, if you said, we expect to pay three nineteen a gallon, that's based on the, what comes from the energy buyers, and we based it on, you know, three-year average consumption, that his belief was that a court would say that's reasonable to have in the default budget. You could argue that it should just be the same exact amount. And, you know, whether that, the court upholds the strictest reading of the law, or, you know, looks at it and says, what you did makes sense because you're meeting this other law over here.
I, I know NASBO has taken the position too, and, and discussion with this, is that it hasn't been challenged because the RSA is so extremely vague.
It's pretty vague.
It would be difficult to argue, quite frankly, on either side, that it's, it truly is open to interpretation and allows you as the board a lot of latitude from which to make the decision on to the development, and is ultimately your decision on the default. So again, I, I would suggest that.
So I think that if you're taking the position on the default budget here, where you're reducing expenses that you've shown here based on our projected costs for this year, that you should at the same time make that same evaluation of the utilities, based on what Dennis just explained. Because if, you know, the previous year's what would have occurred, just using out of district tuition, that line item would stay the same, seven oh nine eight, because that's, that's been the stance of the school board.
Right.
And.
Unless it's driven by IEP.
Yeah, unless it was, yes.
Some argue that an IEP is contractual.
If a student.
Yes, federal and state.
Required by law.
So, and if we had a reduction, then it would be showed in the next budget, but not, not in the default budget. You know, because it was part of the budget last year and it wouldn't have the reduction. And, and you know, the same thing with the special services, those things all, in, in retrospect, I believe were always straight across numbers.
I think we've always followed her up, or any budget for sped, haven't we?
I don't believe so. The services may have to require by law.
See, the, the town takes, the town takes the side of if, and, and this is just their side, and the school hasn't taken that side. But if, if a, if a budgeted line item last year, you know, using just musical instrument lease, was sixteen oh five, and that number was down to a thousand, then they would make the necessary adjustment and make it a thousand dollars in the default budget. And, and the same thing, if it went up, I don't believe they made that, that.
Well, they sure, because that's contractual obligation, that's an easy one, yeah. Lease is a contractual obligation.
Lease would be.
I, I can tell you, I believe you level funded your utilities last year, so you may want me to take a look at that and what you did last year, just on this, for the argument of consistency?
Well, I think, like I said, I'm going, if we're taking a different standard, which says we're going to make adjustments downwards, based on what we know are going to be the recommended costs here, and again, using sped that we know, our budget is a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars less, then I think you have to apply that same principle to utilities. Now, I don't know if they're gonna go up or they're gonna go down, I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
Water, for example, we know is gonna go up insignificantly, because we've already been told to expect an increase between seven and fourteen percent. So to me, that's a pretty straightforward, I mean, this is, this is an obligation that we know of, the fourteen, I think the town said they were gonna use fourteen percent, because it might be applied backwards. So I, I recommend that whatever the town use, if we're, if we're in the same situation, we use it. That would be forty-four eighty, which is, I mean, if you're, if you're gonna take the savings that are there because it makes sense, then this is pretty much a no-brainer that, that you go the other way.
And, and I think you have to, and, and I think there's probably gonna be, you know, numerous debates, but I think we have the same reflection on transportation, that, that we have an issue here. We, we, you know, you know, maybe you have to get in writing from first student, say, we need something in writing that says.
That won't, that won't come, I can guarantee you that.
Or, or a quote, you know, we want a quote. They won't give us a quote if we ask for one?
No, we've asked for one. We've asked for one.
Doesn't mean it's, you know, we're signing a contract, they won't, they, they won't give a quote no matter what, even, even if they said it's gonna go twenty-five percent.
They will not provide us with a quote.
Oh, I mean, because transportation is, is, is going to be an issue.
Normally that would be contracted, and we showed the increase.
That would be a contract, yeah.
Yeah, if, that's why I said, you know, we could, in terms of the default budget, we could bite the bullet and say, give us the quote and we'll sign it, and that's the price that we're gonna pay, independent of what happens with Nashua. And if it's twenty-five percent, that's the contract for the next year. And then there's no discussion about what is the right amount for transportation, you've got your number.
We've asked them for that, and they're not, I can't speak for first student, but my impression is that they're not even sure they wanna make that commitment at this point.
Well, is there, is there, okay, is there another bus company that handles Londonderry and, and Manchester that would give you a quote?
I'm sure there is another bus company.
Yeah, and, and again.
To the extent that they would give us a quote, I don't know, that I can't answer.
Or maybe it's one of those things that the, the school, the school board has to look at. I mean, again, we're, we're, we're putting our default budget and we're putting our own budget in a quandary of not presenting qualified information to the voters. Because we're, we're, and we need to be able to do that, whether, whether, you know, because, again, we don't know how the vote's gonna go. But if they're voting no on everything and default budget is a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars below our, our, our other budget, then that's what's going to get voted in, that's what happened on the town side. I mean, everybody will tell you right now, our budget passed last year, I don't know if it's true or not, but they say, well, because our budget was fifteen thousand dollars less than the default budget. That's why our budget passed. Well, it may be, I hope our budget passes because that's the budget that we put forward that we needed to have. And I, and what I don't wanna see us doing is having two different standards in the, in the default budget as we're going through and processing that, in which we're creating basically two budgets.
This is the first time I've been through this with this board, and I really wanna be clear that this is, these are not my standards. These are things that I have looked back in previous default budgets that this board has put together and tried to follow the same sequence, okay? By level funding utilities, by making the adjustments in areas and, and keeping the, the operating budget that was proposed in the sped area, because again, following what I, as I read to you, regarding the requirements of the mandates of federal and state. So this is not my interpretation, this is my best attempt, if you will, to, to not only look at some of the regulations that have been out there regarding sped, but also look at what this board has done in the past. So again, I, I take direction, I, I'm looking for direction, quite frankly, as to where you wanna go with this.
I think we've always adjusted for sped, because it's legal obligation, so we know, to the best of our ability, we know those numbers are gonna be.
The best that you know.
Right. The best that you know. But I think those reductions, like curriculum review schedule, NIVA software.
Well, so the curriculum.
They should be flat, they should be flat.
The curriculum review schedule, if it's a, a.
Published policy or.
A, a multi-year plan that the board has adopted, the attorney's opinion is that falls under the other, the contractual or, or other obligations incurred by the school board, because the, if it's, if you funded it and it's been in the operating budget, that operating budget has passed, the people have supported it.
Yeah, I'm saying it should come back up, it should be at seventy-eight, ninety-nine, yeah.
Well, but if that's what the cost of that is in that five-year plan, then it should be a reduction. Likewise, the year that it's gonna go up by seventy-five thousand dollars, you should include that as well. Provide, and that was the, one of the issues with the technology plan, was it wasn't fully funded in the first year, so we couldn't include that second year cost like we wanted to. We had to go back to what was funded last year and use that amount. So, i- i- if the right number is fifty-eight, seven oh two for that, then I think it should be a twenty thousand dollar reduction. Because next year, it's probably gonna go up.
Do we know what that number is though, based upon our rotating?
It depends what's up next year. Science books cost a lot. So like you could argue athletic game officials, you probably don't wanna change.
Or are they?
It's like the sixth item down.
No, that would stay flat, I think, because it's not contractual.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, further down, if the thirty-nine, six thirteen is being driven by professional services required by IEP, then it should be adjusted. If it's just because we think it's gonna be lower, then it shouldn't be adjusted, that's.
I think that John is right, that if, if we're gonna, um, flatline certain items, you know, you're not, you're not gonna change it.
No, it should be consistent, flatline everything, except for the things that we are legally obligated to do, yeah.
Then you, you need to keep what is there, do that freeze like Jason was talking about. You keep the freeze because that's the safest route.
Are you saying freeze things like sped though, too? Because.
No, because that's, that's, that's not the nature we have to do.
It's legal obligation, yeah.
But I'm just.
Yeah. So is that our guidance, basically, is freeze everything except for legal obligations?
That's my feeling.
That's my feeling.
Or contract, yeah, contractual.
Yeah, legal and contractual, yeah.
For instance, a snowfall contract.
Yeah, because that's.
We gotta, we gotta multi, yeah, we.
It's a contract, so that's, that's the contractor price, yeah.
All right. I'll go through and make those adjustments.
So like the total salaries that's being driven, I'm assuming that's because there's step movement in the default budget, because there's an accepted pay plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Utilities?
I'd say.
Budget the increase?
I'd say flat, because it's not contractual.
Yeah, you don't, you have no idea what it's gonna be.
Well, it is contractual, you have a contract with, you know, the oil company and the gas company that.
Only if you sign it before.
Yeah, I believe there has been some guidance given relative to utilities, I'll have to find it, but I, if I recall correctly, I believe you have to level fund utilities, even if you anticipate an increase. And then you have to plan accordingly, I think is the way, I'll, I'll see if I can find that for you, I'll give you some guidance on that, too.
Cool. Any more discussion? You have the NHSPA resolutions, aren't we?
That's, we're still, this year we're still.
Oh, this year, well, that's fourteen though, oh, okay.
But this is our last year for budget passes that have.
Do we have to vote on these?
So, no, you don't have to vote on them tonight, I would, I just wanted the board to look at them and think about it for next week, so we can just give it to the delegate for January.
Who's the delegate?
We haven't designated anybody yet.
We haven't designated anybody? Can we just abstain?
You, you can do whatever you want.
Actually, I was reading through it, it looked like it might be an interesting meeting.
John's volunteering.
So are you volunteering?
Not today, I'm not, I'm just telling you I was looking through it.
Just kills a Saturday, that's all.
Yeah.
Any questions in the manifest? Sure we have some community input.
Okay, senior editor of Superior Court, John, I'll try to be less than eight minutes. Regardless of what we wish the default budget to be, it's a fallback position. It's, it's because if a proposed budget does not pass, there's something that we can use. Otherwise, if, if there was no mechanism for a default budget, you'd have no budget to go ahead. And so as much as we'd like it or not, it says, reduced and increased as the case may be, and one of the caveats is, by obligations previously incurred. So in other words, if that obligation was previously incurred and it goes up or it goes down, right? That's what you do. So in, in the case of, let's say, oil costs went down, right? That would be a reduction, you would take that reduction. You cannot take an increase because you're, it's not about what you think it's gonna be, you actually have to have something contracted. And so like looking for a proposal that's not contracted, so then, that would allow then for a proposal for anything in the world, and that default budget could be god knows what. Unfortunately, we view this as two different budgets, they're not two different budgets, we have one budget. The other one's a legal fallback position. The, 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 the students that were here earlier, I commend them highly for coming out to speak to you guys. Interesting to me that we proclaim ourselves to be, you know, the epitome of student-centered learning, you know, we, we really want student-centered learning, and here we have two, two guys that are, that are the epitome of student-centered learning, and yet we have a, we have a process by which we're not gonna really incent them, right? And, and how it felt as a, as a person watching was, yeah, that's a school thing, thanks for coming, that's how it felt. And when I spoke to them in the hallway, that's how they, that's how they took it. So it's unfortunate that we have a system in which we proclaim to be moving towards student-centered learning, they go do that, and then we kinda say, thank, thanks, thanks for playing. Has the school board attorney, will, will the school board attorney review the default budget? Because I know that was a commitment made at some point, but I hadn't heard that tonight yet, so. And when he does, I'd, I'd hope that you release his opinion. I think that once you discuss the attorney's opinion, unless there is some non-public reason why you shouldn't, you should always release what the public has paid for. So in this instance, the impact fees, that opinion should be released, unless there's something, you know, that needs to be redacted. I, I happen to enjoy spikes in the increase in, in taxes, be they up or down, because it makes the taxpayer feel that pain, and they want to be interested. When, when that frog is being boiled in the pot of water, it's because he doesn't feel any difference in life, and before you know it, he's dead. Right, even though that, they say that, that's not really a good analogy, because frogs don't really do that. But the point, the point is the same, is I, as a taxpayer, wanna be able to feel, wow, they're saving my money, or wow, what, what are they doing? It, it's a false sense of security when we don't allow people to do that. And the loss of revenue, did I hear five hundred thousand dollars?
It's, it's not the right number yet.
Oh, close?
Probably three hundred thousand.
So that's not shown necessarily anywhere, in other words, that has to be made up for status quo. So that's, you know, a half a million dollars will have to be raised and appropriated, I'm sure. And lastly, I just wanna make sure I got notes right here.
Well, not all of it.
No.
Because if it's debt service, if it's just the percentage of debt service, so we don't have to make that up.
Right, right, for the debt payment, correct. Yep. And, and I would highly, I, I would, I know there was a discussion about the two thousand and three warrant article. If it is, quite honestly, if, if, if it weighs on your mind, then repeal it, right? If it's something so far away that nobody cares about anymore, then why be afraid to put it back on top and repeal it? Right? If you don't, it's because you're worried that folks are going to say, yeah, please don't do that, continue that, right? So I'm not gonna do it this year, because I, I just didn't have. So I'm not going to do it this year because I, I just didn't have time to put it together, but I plan to next year to bring that up and, and put it on the, as a petition, you know, reaffirm it or not. But I'd like to get by it so that we don't have this conversation anymore. You know, we, we continue to have these conversations because as taxpayers, we feel that you're going to ignore us. Well, the voter has spoken, until they've spoken again, that is the law of the land. It's, like Dennis said, you know, we agree again tonight, it's settled law, right? It is until...
I was using that as a bad example.
My point is to say...
It's not settled law because it has no, no legal binding on anybody.
That's right.
So you can't call it legal law, Jason.
So put up the Warren article and, and get rid of it. Get, get someone else's, get a new...
Maybe we'll wait a year, let you do it.
Right, so you're bound to it, right?
Well, you seem so motivated by it.
I will.
Where's the language? And with that, can we please have a motion entered?
One thing I gotta do is respond to one of the comments Jason made.
Oh, go right ahead.
And that is as far as the students were here, and I do commend them also.
Yeah.
But I also don't think the board wrote off that to school.
No, absolutely not. And that's, I'm thankful you bring that up. I don't think we blew that off. I think we thought that changing the rules, when you're on the five yard line, was probably not fair to anybody and...
No, and I think Dennis brought it up. I mean, I think we need to look at it.
Yeah, for the future.
Going forward, so it's not the situation again.
I mean, if we had to make a ruling today, I could have easily made a ruling, but I would have voted that it didn't impact 2013, 14 students. Because that would have been totally unfair to three and a half years' worth of, of education and process. And their own words were, "We didn't take this class to have X occur." Well, while X is now occurring, why not? And, and I, like I said, I don't feel that it would be fair to them if, if they were on the other shoe, and I don't think it is, is, is fair. But I, I, you know, you know, hopefully the, the administration will do their process and...
And you don't, you don't want to do a knee-jerk reaction.
No.
You need to thoughtfully do it, so...
We dealt with the GPA before, it was a multi-meeting...
It's not, it's not an easy thing to, it's not an easy...
Well, there's no, you're, you're not, you're not going to win, whether you're trying to win, you're not going to get out of it on anybody's, nobody's going to be happy, no, no matter where you, where we come. So like, just like you said, you spent, what, a few months trying to get this policy and then you ended up implementing it to affect a group of kids you didn't even know were coming, and here it is...
Four years later.
Four years later, and here are the consequences of that impact.
At least they all knew the rules upfront. If we changed the rules now, it's not fair because they didn't know the rules upfront. We can change them for next year, but...
Well, even then, I mean, just think if you have five juniors that are, through the same process, if you change it for next year...
I'm saying for next year, for the factory.
No, no, I'm with you, I'm with you. It's hard, you know, you can't change so many things midstream.
Yeah, to this point in time, with nothing on the HAPC, let it to CHS administration to make the decisions about the, how they calculate GPA and how to do it. And I very much agree with Dennis. I think they'll make a good decision. I think they, they know what's on the line. These, these kids are, you know, what they do and who they deal with every day. And I have every faith that, that they'll make a good decision. And there is no right, there is no fair. It's just, I, I mean, you know...
There's no right and fair, and there's no right, there's no fair, but there is wrong answer to this.
I have faith in it, but...
It's wrong no matter what you do.
That's what I'm saying.
The high school administration will come up with a, with a judicious and well-founded decision, and by definition, someone will be unhappy, but...
Well, I mean, I don't know. I think, I think Ryan had a, what seemed like a pretty good compromise, you know, compromising was a bad taste in everybody's mouth. This, and I forget who said that the first time. Would you tell me who said that?
Gordon.
Oh, Gordon.
Got the lawyer out of this.
But, but, I mean, my belief is that, you know, either guidance or principal, assistant principal will probably sit with each of the affected individuals, and it may go beyond the three that we saw. I don't know how close four, five, six, seven, eight is, you know...